And we're here tonight just to talk very briefly and to invite you to a really big party. Every year for the past five years Milton has hosted the We Are Milton Music Fest and Fireworks on Hutchinson Field. This year it's going to be held on Saturday, June 24th and Sunday, June 25th.
That's right, so we have two events. We have the Milton Music Fest and Fireworks followed by Celtic Sunday on the Sunday following Saturday. And we have fireworks, we have a lot of fun, we have great events for the kids. What else?
Well, we're gonna have unbelievable music, an unbelievable lineup of music and lots and lots of activities. We're gonna have a giant sandbox, volleyball.
Giant sandbox.
Everything that your kids will love, so please mark your calendars now, check out the website, like us on Facebook.
And we thank the Colvin Foundation for being the primary founder for this, but if any of you want to help, we're interested in talking to you. And look at that picture, huh? Anyone there that night? Was that great?
Hey!
Okay, and we'll finish it up with this.
The event starts on Saturday at 3:00 and goes till fireworks should go off at 10:00. And on Sunday, Celtic Sunday begins around 1:30 and ends at 9:30. Please mark your calendars and invite all your friends.
We need some volume, Steve. Volume on the video. How's it sound? It's a great band, okay? Hey, do any of you like the band Chicago? We got a tribute band gonna be there, it's gonna be unbelievable. The little red one, what's that little red one?
As Bob just mentioned, my name is Barbara Martin. I'm a precinct eight town meeting member and a member of the selectmen's office. Kevin Cook, the Town of Milton's Veterans Agent, Frank Stout, Therese Desmond and I are planning this year's Memorial Day services. 2017 marks the 100th anniversary of two significant dates in history. May 29th commemorates the 100th birthday of President John F. Kennedy, and accordingly, we will have two special guests with ties to the U.S. Navy joining us on Memorial Day. The color guard from the USS Constitution will be marching in this year's parade, and Dr. James R. Holmes, Military Professor of Strategy at the U.S. Naval War College in Newport, Rhode Island, will be the featured speaker. 2017 also marks the anniversary of the United States entry into World War I, and Milton's relationship to this historical event will be a program highlight. This year's Memorial Day observance will be held on Monday, May 29th, with ceremonies beginning at 9:30 a.m. at the Town Green. Participants will then process to Milton Cemetery where the formal program is set to begin at 10:00 a.m. We hope that you will join us on Monday, May 29th, to honor those who gave the last full measure of devotion. Thank you.
I'm John Folkerelli, Chairperson of the Milton Public Library Board of Trustees and Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, and member of the Capital Improvement Committee. I rise to address a point that is overdue, as we say in library parlance, that is my fellow trustees Hyacinth Kritzlo, Herb Voight, Chris Hodlin, Rayz Waqil, Andrea Gordon, Paul Hayes, Carrie Hugh, and our newly elected board member Sindhu Meyer, to honor the service and dedication of Frank Schroth, who served out his second and last term this April for a total of six years on the board. As you may know, Frank most recently served as Chair of the Board. As a trustee, Frank was a visionary seeing the critical role of the library in the Milton community, and throughout his tenure, a fierce advocate for the library. Frank worked to devise better measures of library usage that more clearly demonstrated the library's need for resources to meet the current demands of our residents. This effort resulted in the library adding much-needed incremental staffing hours to our previous budgets. It was Frank's idea to start Milton Reads, which has now become a minor institution in the town and hopefully will continue to be so for many years. Frank has done a wonderful job, we will miss his wisdom, guidance and good humor. Please join me in giving Frank a round of applause. And also give me a, please help me in giving a hand to our new member, welcome our new member Sindhu Meyer. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I'd like to recognize Rabbi Benjamin of Temple Beth Shalom.
Good evening and thank you. On behalf of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, I'm here to talk about how after the second incident of swastika graffiti happened in our schools, Reverend Hal Kirkham said something that was just absolutely brilliant. He said, "What, we're just gonna send a second letter to the Milton Times? That's just not enough. It's just not good, because it's not effective." And so, with that, we started working on an initiative that's called "It's Time to Talk About Hate: A Family-Centered Conversation." Because there are times when we realize that bad things will keep happening in communities when good people keep silent. And so for this, we had to say, "Not here, not now, not ever." But how do you put that into action? Put it into action by working with our school system, with Mary Gormley, with Karen Spalding, and with experts in the field, and I present here to the town meeting members, you're the first ones to get it other than our selectmen who got this earlier today, three versions of this conversation. One for families who have children two to five years old, that's in the white, and it's gonna be passed around so you can take some home. Another, children ages six through 12, it's the yellow, and the blue for children 13 through 17. We can't be responsible for the entire world, though we sure are for our corner of it. So this month of May, this is the month that we're pushing for every family. Milton Academy is on board with this, St. Mary of the Hills is on board with this, we have the sports organizations that are part of this. So many have said this conversation needs to happen, and we want it to happen in May. So have this with your grandchildren, have this with your children, be a voice, ask your neighbors, have you had this conversation? You need to be the voice. We can't put it out by ourselves, we need to spread this out, and you need to be that voice. Ask coaches, have you asked the parents if they've had this conversation? So we're gonna pass this around, take a copy that you think is appropriate for you, as I said, there are three, take a look, you'll be able to see on the front which is appropriate. I have 210 total copies of the three, and I just have one prayer. I'm a rabbi, I have one prayer. I pray the town meeting ends tonight. So that you can get to this tomorrow night. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Mike Sullis, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. Last week, this town meeting approved Article 16, which was the establishment of a Chief Procurement Officer. My normal process here is if an article is going my way is to not get up, to stay in my seat, which I did then, and I gave up the opportunity to acknowledge the efforts of the Town School Consolidation Committee, which spawned this article and this position. So I'd like now to acknowledge the efforts of the Town School Consolidation Committee. It was a group that worked over 16 months, gave up a lot of their morning hours, worked very hard, came up with four proposals to improve efficiency in the operation of town and school operations, and was four-for-four with those proposals. Establishing new financial software for town and school operations, paperless payroll, bi-weekly payroll, and then the Chief Procurement Officer, all things that are low-hanging fruit in the private sector certainly, but for a town like Milton was fruit that was dying on the vine, and I think that this group deserves some recognition. The group was comprised of then-Town Administrator Anne Marie Fagan, Amy Dexter, then and still Town Accountant Gwen Pavlicek, then and still Assistant Superintendent of Business for the Schools, Julie McAuliffe, then and still Town Treasurer, and Phil Matthews, then and still Phil Matthews. So anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge all their efforts, they put in a lot of hard work, and they came up with a lot of initiatives that I think have improved things a little bit around here, so I just want to thank them for that.
Having been advised by the town clerk, that a majority of the town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business. So I was advised by one of the town meeting members that they wished to make a motion to reopen an article. So Chair recognizes Diane Agostino.
Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine, and also a member of the Commission on Disability, past chair. We can't hear, sorry. Past Chair of the Commission on Disability also, which we haven't been able to meet this year due to too many illnesses, but that's been an additional role that makes me rise this evening. On page 52, which means that it is after one hour, and we will need a two-thirds vote to consider this, and I trust there will be a second so I can explain why I rise to even bring this up. It's Article 21 of the Public Works. So I move to reopen Article 21.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been seconded. This is, seems non-debatable, I think. So all in favor, we needed two-thirds vote, all in favor of reopening?
Well, don't we have to have discussion?
Pardon me?
Don't we have discussion so they know why?
You're right, pardon me, I jumped the gun. So yes, why don't you continue with your rationale, ma'am?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. On Thursday evening, when we discussed the overlay fund, had an additional $65,000, however the green sheet notified us there was an additional $50,000, and it was too late in the evening to rise to make this motion. However, we heard from, I believe it was the Town Accountant in coordination with the Warrant Committee, discussed that we could always use that $50,000 in the fall and appropriate it at that time. I do feel, and I think many residents might feel, that if we have $50,000 that could be appropriated for a needy cause, a cause that maybe everyone in this room and many department heads would agree with, that we should then appropriate the $50,000 now and reduce the requested amount on the override by 50,000. So I started making some phone calls to some of the managers of the departments, because my first thought was, well, maybe a traffic enforcement officer, because traffic seems to be the number-one concern in this town. We're concerned about car accidents, we're concerned about pedestrians crossing streets, and that's pretty much town-wide right now, major concern. But then, that would be a recurring expense. So I listened to the people, the individuals I spoke to, and all of a sudden, I learned that the school committee actually had a subcommittee regarding traffic issues for the safety of the children. And then when I talked to the Town Administrator, he pointed out that the intersection at the Pierce Middle School from Central Ave, Reedsdale Road and Brook Road is not even noted, has a school zone. And then we've all heard about so many children trying to cross that Standish Ave and Brook Road, whether it's going to St. Mary's, or students trying to get home from Pierce or even the high school. It was just recently on one of the social medias that a young high school student pressed the button, the light was red, and when she stepped off the curb, she almost got hit by a car. So in listening to everyone, you know, of course, the school department, the first thought, which came to me also, was 50,000 might be one more teacher. But then the more I listened to people, the more I realized, and in speaking to the Town Administrator, and I did present this motion, or the concept of a motion, to the Board of Selectmen this evening, that if the 50,000 could go into a line item where it could be appropriated for the purposes of traffic calming, equipment, or street markings, whatever, I mean, it might help the East Milton Neighborhood Association. We couldn't determine in one day how far $50,000 could go, but it's 50,000, and I think it would be great PR to tell the residents of the town that we are hearing you, we do understand the serious need to work on traffic calming in our town. I mean, we did vote the 25-mile-per-hour item. In fact, even to get those signs, there's going to be an expenditure needed, and we didn't exactly apply funding for that. The additional consideration, we also voted that the Traffic Commission would be headed up by the new DPW head. So in considering all the options, it just seemed that the Public Works line item, so the exact motion, Mr. Moderator, which I have a copy for you, would read that the Article 21 of the Public Works, which is on page 52, Public Works General would increase under the non-contingent recommendation, which I did try to reach the Warrant Committee late today and couldn't get a hold of the Chair, or the current Chair. So the non-contingent recommendation would increase to $1,853,742, and the contingent recommendation, and this is a little PR for the override, would decrease by 50,000 to The vehicle maintenance would stay the same, the subtotal of Public Works would adjust to $2,406,299, the contingent recommendation would be $85,501, stormwater management would remain the same, the total Public Works would be $3,863,020, the contingent rec would be $133,601, and that, little typo there, "two," we're adding the word "two", and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $3,996,621 be raised from the tax levy, and 50,000 be raised from the funds released from the overlay reserved, and then the language would continue. Now, I just want to point out, the reason this is doable and we couldn't do it in the reserve, because two weeks prior to town meeting, as town meeting members know, we have to let the public know the maximum amount that might go into each budget, so by increasing the non-contingent line item by 50 and deducting the contingent line item, we have a zero wash. So I am hopeful that those people I spoke to today will, you know, stand to support what I basically heard, and that any residents, whether they're in East Milton or have children at the Pierce Middle School, will rise to support this motion so that we can put this 50,000 to good use starting July 1st, instead of waiting for town meeting in October, when who knows where it will go. And hopefully, the town will pass the override, I kind of don't have a doubt on that, but, Mr. Moderator, I'll give this to you so you can have the language reviewed. I know, I think the numbers are right.
So we have a motion to reconsider that's been seconded, and then Ms. Agostino explained her rationale, but those numbers are not on the table right now. Would anyone else wish to speak to the motion to reconsider? All those in favor of the motion to reconsider Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote, and the motion fails. In that case, we are off to First Order of Business, which my records show were 24, Article 24. Recommended that the town appropriate $718,836 for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that $75,000 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for funding, and that $793,836 be raised and appropriated as follows. Stormwater enterprise revenue, total revenue, non-contingent, $793,836. Stormwater enterprise costs, subtotal direct costs, $718,836, indirect costs, $75,000, total, $793,836. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes?
Renit Voight, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. When I was on the Warrant Committee in the early 90s, the state was drastically reducing the aid to the local towns, and at the same time, we were grappling with Proposition Two and a Half. We were at a crossroads. Would we ask the voters to approve a contingent budget so that we could continue services even at level funding? During the years from 1988 through 1995, we put forth, and the voters approved, seven overrides. Some neighboring towns did the same, but their overrides did not pass, and the differences are now striking. We are listed as an affluent suburb of Boston, with Money Magazine listing Milton as the top 10 towns of places to live in America, 2007, 2009, 2011. That did not happen on its own. It's because of these decisions, and by the way, the citizens of Milton approved at least four more overrides, with the last one in 2009. Voters had gone to the polls 15 times to vote on overrides, and it's because of these reasons that our town is so desirable for its renovated schools, library, and excellent services. It is because of those decisions in the 90s and early 2000s that our houses are selling above asking price and spend little or no time on the market. So why am I bringing this up? Under Article 24, well, we passed this at last year's town meeting, and although information was put out to citizens as to why this was necessary, many were surprised by this new bill, and they didn't understand it. Many have called it an additional tax. I'm fearful that this perception will cloud the important contingent budget question coming up in June. I implore the selectmen and town leaders to find an alternative way to collect these monies, and also to continue to our towns, to explain to our townspeople just what this Stormwater Enterprise Fund is and was last year when we sent out the bills. Our decisions in the 90s and early 2000s are what I believe is one of the main reasons our town is so desirable and Milton is a hot place to live. Neighboring towns have not been so fortunate, and their quality of life has decreased. As leaders of the community, we need to be the spokespeople for the contingent budget to propel us forward in the 21st century and to find a way to not have the Stormwater Enterprise Fund interfere with our common goal. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this recommendation, this article? Mr.
My name is Webster Collins. I am a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Nine. What I would like to do this evening is to talk on two items. One, basic town economics. Second item, the stormwater management issue, and relate the two and tie the two together. I'll begin. For those Town Meeting Members who do not know me, I am part of a firm named CBRE Group, which is the world's largest commercial real estate firm. Within the firm, we have many groups, many companies. One of those companies is named CBRE Econometric Advisors. What does CBRE Econometric Advisors do? They advise for every city or town in the United States, and they have all the economics on our whole country, places for their clients to invest or not to invest, and I have access to basic economics for every city or town in the country. So in preparation for this evening, I decided that I would run those economics for the Town of Milton just to see what they say. And they're very, very interesting, because the economics I was looking for was the rate of growth per household of the income of the residents of the Town of Milton, and then compare it with the 2.5% increase that we've had every year in terms of our overrides, the terms of our real estate taxes, and now we're talking about 2.5% plus a lot more. The numbers that I'm going to give you are kind of surprising this evening. For the last five years, and I'm gonna give you prior five years and next five-year projections from our firm. The prior five years for the households of Milton, the average rate of increase of household income, I'm gonna use round numbers rather than all the dots, approximately 7 tenths of 1% compared with taxes changing 2.5% each year. The number for going forward for 2017, actually it's 2018 to 2022, is 0.86% increase for income, again, in comparison with 2.5% per year for every year on real estate taxes. I'd now like to go into something that's even more important that I discovered, that you take, we saw on the boards, $80,000 is the average wage for the people in the school department. Let's compare that with the average household income, not an individual, but household income in the Town of Milton at, because the statistics I had stop at $75,000 and down before I go to the numbers above. But the point that I'm making is the average household income in the Town of Milton, $75,000 or less, is 54% of all households. That's an astonishing figure to me. As I thought this whole thing through, I said to myself, "We're pushing, pushing, pushing against a afford-to-pay issue here that we really haven't addressed." I wish someone had asked me before we've had this meeting, if I could run these numbers for the town, I would have been glad to do it for free and give them this type of background information I am presenting right now. That has caused me to have great concern over whether or not- That has caused me to have great concern over whether or not a override has a reality of going through due to the basic economics of our town. And that caused me to then move next to the subject of the Stormwater runoff budget, and the $713,000, and the higher number I can't read from behind me, for the next step. And what I did was, I looked into it, and again, because of the firm I'm with, I have access to the best legal counsel in the United States, and I was able to call on them with my friend Marvin Gordon, and get some real good information. We've been dealing on this whole Stormwater runoff situation with false data. The whole wastewater issue, is not the wastewater, the Stormwater runoff issue, what controls it is not the EPA, which superimposed everything that you have heard before this evening, but it was really the issue of the Supreme Court of the United States. Because in 2006, under a major decision, a plurality, called Rapanos versus United States, Stormwater, excuse me, wastewater, getting twisted, I want to be careful, waters of the United States are fast-flowing rivers, streams, and are continuous. The issue of our drainage question is it's intermittent, and there was a major decision on intermittent versus continuous. And under intermittent laws in this Commonwealth, since the issue of the waste, the Stormwater, that's getting tongue-tied here, but the issue of flowing streams disappears, and the only thing that governs is the issue of the Stormwater drainage. Again, under laws, if once the federal government pulls out of that whole issue, or is not part of that issue, then where does it flow to? It flows to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to cover, not the individual cities and towns. The bottom line is, we have jumped the gun in terms of acting too fast, and not doing enough internal research to come up with the right answer. The money we've been spending is just under regulation, unnecessary. With that brief introduction and explanation, I'd like to turn over comments, further comments, to Marvin Gordon, because there's a, what I'm going to ultimately do, and we are going to ultimately do, is recommend that these amounts of money be put into the reserve fund, so that, bottom line, if we don't have the money from the override, that we have and can use that money for the best interest of the town itself. Marvin?
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you very much, Marvin Gordon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. And I'm speaking to you as a town meeting member, and as the, on behalf of Milton Fuller Housing Corporation, which is the town's largest taxpayer. And I know that this town meeting has gone on for a long time, and I'm going to try and be very brief, so I'm not going to give you all the points that I could offer to say why I'm supporting Mr. Collins's amendment to transfer the appropriation to the reserve fund, in case it is needed to actually spend on these projects. But this all became a more of an issue. Well, let me first say that, from an environmentalist's point of view, that most of these supposed corrections to our drainage system are probably needed and worthwhile, and should be spent over perhaps a longer period of time. But this became more of an issue that we could decide ourselves, rather than, as was discussed in last year's town meeting, rather than what was a federal mandate. Because on February 28th, our president, who has been probably the worst thing that's happened environmentally to this Commonwealth since the president of '78, but our president issued an executive order, which was referring to it, the court case that Webster described, Rapanos versus United States, in which the president specifically said that the decision of that, that court decision was going to, by his executive order, was going to be implemented, meaning that the definition of navigable waters in the federal statute excluded discontinuous surface drainage systems, such as our stormwater system, and he ordered that the EPA not enforce that stipulation. So now it become, is by the president's order, which is undoubtedly, and according to the Napa Valley Water Board, is already going to be challenged in court, but for a long period of time, this is going to be an issue of whether it was within his authority to suspend implementation of that federal mandate, and to suspend it. And his new EPA director, Scott Pruitt, sent a memo to all the field offices, EPA field offices, that they, this was, this whole program, when it was, as it referred to surface, discontinuous surface drainage, was in abeyance, and would not, and was not to be enforced by that agency. The law is still there, but the definition of navigable waters comes to, is a big issue. I could, I could, this is, in a sense, if you read the president's comments on issuing that executive order, and almost every one of his executive orders, since January 20th, has been, if it weren't so serious in affecting our nation's well-being, you would say that it's high comedy. But this particular one, in his statement when he issued it, is almost comical, and that he, he states, and I just quote for one, one or two sentences, "The EPA so-called Waters of the United States rule is one of the worst examples of federal regulation, and it has truly run amok, and is one of the rules most strongly opposed by farmers, ranches, agricultural workers, et cetera, and so forth." He, and he said, if you want, quoting again, "If you want to build a new home, for example, you have to worry about getting hit with a huge fine if you fill in as much as a puddle, just a puddle, on your lot." That's just some of his comments, but the reference is back to the Supreme Court decision in 2006, and the EPA is not enforcing it. In the meantime, the last three, six selectmen's meetings, including tonight, last Thursday night, and last Tuesday night, I've asked the Board of Selectmen some questions which are directly pertinent to this, one of which is how much, since this town meeting was sold, that we had to have this as a separate enterprise fund last year, on the basis of it being a federal mandate? So how much of the $713,000 is representative of the federal mandate? And how much was the stormwater drainage system maintenance and cleaning that we've done for roughly 100 years, since we started, since we had the, and was, we started installing street drainage? And up until this fund, has been a DPW expenditure, which was covered, and therefore covered by the restrictions of Proposition 2 and 1/2. So that portion, and the supposed federal mandate, mandate portion, has been taken out from Proposition 2 and 1/2. And, and, as I just mentioned, I've asked, how much of that $713,000 is because of the federal mandate? And how much was what we always paid for out of the tax rate? Now, I've asked that three times, and I have yet to get an answer. I have yet to get an answer. And this is going to be under litigation, probably nationwide, but it's already in litigation, as far as the Napa Valley Group is concerned, so maybe, highly unlikely.
Mr. Gordon, just to note, you have two minutes left. Okay?
Highly unlikely that this will be decided that quickly, but if it's decided, and we're supposed to spend it, then putting it in the reserve fund will make it available for the warrant committee to allocate the money back to be spent. In the meantime, I think we should, I urge a yes vote for Webster's amendment, and it's environmentally, the object of this fund is very worthwhile, but as a mandate, and a year when we're trying to get an override, and when the town, from everything I've heard, from my constituents, and from people all around the town, the majority of the voters in this town are very upset with the unexpected taxation without representation fee that they got in the mail within the last few weeks. So I urge a yes vote on the amendment, and we'll, hopefully, that isn't cutting the money out, it's just changing the process to something that's more logical. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, I mistakenly took your copy of the motion. Would you, how about I hand it back to you, so you can read it into the record?
To appropriate $0 for fiscal year 17, and $0 for the non-contingent recommended fiscal year 18, and to transfer the $713,219 to Article 42 Reserve Fund, and to transfer the $793,836 to Article 42 Reserve Fund.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded?
Do you want me to give this to?
Yes, if you could hand that to Ms. Gutman. Ms. Agostino?
Diana Tullio Agostino, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, didn't we just discuss earlier, the reserve fund has a maximum amount that the residents were notified would go into that fund, so if we're going to go dump some $798,000, that certainly would exceed the limit. So I'd like that clarification from Town Council.
We will get that clarification.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Mullins?
Peter Mullin, Precinct 2. I think we also need a clarification as to whether you can change the appropriation for the fiscal year 2017. I don't believe that this body can at this point.
Mr. Collins, was your motion to change 17 or 18? Both? Thank you. Mr. Innis, if you could comment without a third question, that would, I think, suit our panel.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, it would be a third question.
It will be a third question.
Jermaine, you and Innis, my meeting member, Precinct 3. This is an enterprise fund. I am not aware that that money could go to the reserve fund at all.
If you'll a little louder, please, sir. Sorry.
Sorry. This is an enterprise fund. I'm not aware that the enterprise money could go to the reserve fund regardless of the request on the motion.
So I've kept a record of all, if you could, if we could avoid asking more questions for the panel that's currently stumped. And just had comments. Mr. Chin, you were next. Do you want to hold off and wait for the main, or the, yes, okay. Yes, sir, you're speaking to the motion to amend, right?
Yes, actually, a small question in relation to.
Oh, no.
Sorry about that. I want to commend Mr. Collins and Mr. Gordon for their efforts on researching this, and I'm not sure if everyone's aware, this is a recent federal issue in the last 90 days, specifically. And my question is, this particular law is under siege by a federal government that's kind of run amok here. And my question is, if we have these funds, and the law is reversed on the federal level, and we're looking at possible, do we have to reimburse funds to people that have been collected? If that thing changes in the very near future, which could happen, we may have a can of worms that we don't want to open. So I'm hoping someone can talk about those funds, what happens if that law changes, and we've collected that from our citizens. Sorry.
Mr. Bopri?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Point of clarification, we cannot allocate additional funds to the reserve fund, because it is more than what was requested, as was printed in the warrant. So funds cannot be allocated to the reserve fund right now in excess of what has been requested and printed in your warrant. So that's a point of clarification on the amendment as proposed right now.
So that was question number one. Yes, Ms. Conlin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Katie Conlin, Precinct 3, and Chair of the Board of Selectmen. We are unanimously opposed to the motion to amend. We, in addition to what the warrant committee chairman pointed out regarding the reserve fund, we want to point out to town meeting that FY17 is the year that we're currently in. A lot of those monies are already being spent. There's nothing that we can touch in terms of fiscal year FY17. At most, this amendment could address fiscal 18. But I'd like to ask the moderator, in the absence of Town Council, John Flynn, tonight, we have his colleague Lauren Galvin, who is here. We'd ask Mr. Moderator that she be recognized to speak to the issue of the president's executive order, and then for the Public Works Director, Joe Lynch, to address some of the questions about the services regarding the stormwater, what the stormwater fee is being used for, what services.
Okay, so you answered question number two, which is, can we have a motion to amend FY17? The answer is no. So that's two down.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, would you introduce yourself for the audience, please?
Good evening, Lauren Galvin, Murphy Hesse Tumi in Lehane, Office of Town Council. I've been asked by the selectmen to speak as to the effect of the presidential executive order. This particular order just calls for a review of the definitions of the federal act. At this time, the law has not changed in any way. It's the same. It's the same law we've been dealing with all along, and there's no change to the current status of the federal law at this time.
Mr. Lynch, you recognized?
Sure. Um, first, Mr. Moderator, I can indulge for 30 seconds to a minute first. Uh, this is probably my very last appearance before town meeting after eight years of doing that. I want to thank this body as a whole for the support to my department, to my folks, and to the people of this town for allowing me to do my job. You guys were personally here, you've been here 355 years, I've been here mine. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll answer the question. I'll answer the question. Ready? Um, with regards to what portion of that budget, both last year and this year, is comprised in compliance with the federal EPA, 100% of it is. And if you remember, that there are things that we've been doing for years under the, at this point, 13 years of the prior permit to carry those things out. Things like the yard waste that you get collected 16 weeks a year, by this action will go away. No more collection of yard waste. Household collection has a, uh, Waste Collection Day that happens every fall, goes away. The $66,000 of debt service assigned to the enterprise generated through the Treasurer's Office will create a $66,000 structural deficit in the Treasurer's, in, uh, Article, under interest and maturing debt under Article 39. $75,000 of indirect costs that comes out of general government calculated by Amy, uh, Town Accountant will create a $75,000 structural deficit in Article 17 of the general government. So all of these things, if you look at the actual expense of carrying out the service of this year compared to last year, is only $1,000 more this year in FY18 as compared to 17. And it's those things that you're already getting. No catch basins will be cleaned, zero. No streets will be swept, zero. This action is dangerous. It not only guts it on principle, it guts it on service. It will result in the elimination, the, the layoff of four employees who have a pro rata, pro rata assignment of, uh, allocation of their salaries into the enterprise that's calculated by the Town Accountant. This is dangerous business.
Can I just, before we, can I just keep track of questions? Cause members, so Mr. Innes, since we can't go to the reserve, enterprise to reserve is moot, you're okay? Sir, in the, the white, um, I don't think we answered the question about, uh, what happens to the law, to the funds if the law is changed in mid-year? Could we, um, if you could ponder that answer, ma'am, do you know that from a legal standpoint? If you don't know, need to confer, that's fine, but if you know, thanks.
There's a lack of clar, there is a lack of clarity at this time as to exactly what the review is going to entail and as to what's going to happen with the definitions. I'm sorry, I can't give a, a solid answer at this time about what's going to happen with this particular, um, uh, legal requirement.
Okay, so we don't know. All right, thank you. Um, next, sir, I think, uh, Mr. Funley, I think, uh, so Mr. Collins, we'll have to get through all the first speakers before we get another shot. So, thank you. Mr. Funley?
Jay Funley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Uh, just to follow up on what our Town Council said, I've been following the process of EPA rules very closely in the past few months, reading a lot about it. And one thing I've learned is changing a rule like this, certainly at the EPA level, it can't just be a political change. Obviously, they're politically motivated, but the, any change you make to the actual rules written down have to be based on facts. You can't just say, let's ignore the facts the previous administration had. You have to put together, here's our plan, here's our facts, here's why our plan is better. So you can't just waive and change a, a rule. It's not that easy. Every administration comes in and says they want to change a lot of rules, and then they get stuck, and changes don't get made. Uh, if there are any changes put forth, we'll have to go through a very tedious process. There have to be questions, has to be input from the public, you have to consider all the public's input. And then if they do change a rule, it'd be can, I agree with the previous speakers who said it'll be contested in courts for years, it will be contested in courts for years. And in the meantime, the rule will stay the same. So I'm not, I'm not sure if there'll be any changes in the rules, I would bet against it, but if there are any changes, it'll be several years from now, certainly after the FY18 budget passes, is, is in the history. Thank you.
Good. Um, Mr. Frizzetti, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7, and Member of the Board of Cemetery Trustees. Um, from what, my, we're talking to the amendment right now, is that correct?
That is correct. The motion to amend, right.
It was my understanding that, um, beca, because of the, uh, amount in Article 42, that it's possible that this amendment may be out of scope. Could you give a ruling on that?
Uh, yeah, we, well, we've received an opinion that you can't, um, transfer the funds into the reserve fund. So I think that means the motion will have to be declared out of order. Well, is, so hang on a sec, folks. Can I just take a moment to just, uh, have a quick sidebar? Yes, just been advised that, uh, since it is against our rules to increase the reserve fund, um, beyond the amount that was published in the warrant, then I'm unable to go accept a motion to go increase the reserve fund beyond that amount. So the motion is declared out of scope. So that ends this, this motion. So, given that that motion is, is, uh, laid aside, we're back to the primary recommendation from the Warrant Committee. Does anyone wish to speak to that motion? I think, Mr. Chinman, you've been waiting. Yes.
Michael Chinman, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. I want to go back to the first speaker who spoke about the sometimes need for overrides to maintain services in Milton, to keep Milton the excellent place that it has been. Uh, and I want to echo her comments that to go to the voters to get an override, you have to, uh, be honest and act trustworthy in presenting the numbers to them. And I think something untrustworthy and dishonest happened regarding the storm water utility that we approved last year at the last town meeting member, at, at last town meeting after we approved it. Uh, and my point will may have been made clearer if, uh, if we had an average per household, the average fee per household, uh, paid in Milton. If anyone knows that number, I, I appreciate hearing it. I came up with, using that number, 793,836, and divide it by the number of households I found on the internet, which was 9,274, and came up with a number of $85.59 per household. That may be an inaccurate number because it doesn't take into account the businesses and nonprofits who, uh, who pay this fee. Um, but, uh, if someone has a better number for the average fee per household, I'll work with that. Um, I know, I think my house is fairly typical in Milton, I paid $52 fee. So I, I'm assuming it's somewhere between $52 and that $85.59 that I came up with. And, uh, when we approved this a year ago, was it a year ago? Um, it was pitched to us on the idea that there is spending that is mandated by the EPA that we have to spend. It's nondiscretionary, we don't have any choice, we have to spend it to be in compliance with the EPA requirements. And this was an opportunity to shift that spending to an enterprise fund, which, with the twin benefits, that it included nonprofits who would pay the fee, which they don't do under the general tax, and it did not count under Proposition 2 and 1/2 spending. And, um, the fundamental basis of that was that we had to spend this money anyway. And I think, uh, there was a speaker here, um, who got up and said it's a no-brainer. And I voted for it too. I thought it was a good idea, and I still do think it was a good idea, but it was a good, small idea. What happened after we approved this is that the amount that was allocated by the Board of Selectmen for this, uh, enterprise fee far, far exceeds what the EPA requirement is. There is no mandate from the EPA for spending on pollution abatement for storm water. There is no mandate. The EPA recognizes that communities across the United States are all different, and instead of having a mandated spending, the EPA says you have to abate your pollution by the best means possible by picking a mix of six categories that you will implement as your pollution abatement plan. There's six categories, five of them are not DPW. If you look at our, uh, the comment on, on, on this article, it lists all the spending and says it's all DPW spending. The six categories include public education is one, public participation is one, enforcement against polluters is one, and those are important because they're not DPW spending, and apparently they would have a big effect on Milton's pollution abatement because the DPW posted to Facebook that the major source of our pollution is dog poop bags put down through storm water sewers. That's public education to get that person, and it could be just a few people, uh, could generate hundreds of bags a year, public education and enforcement going after the people who are polluting like that, uh, which doesn't have to cost a lot of money. If you go to the house adjoining a storm water where this problem exists, storm water drain where this problem exists and says, you know, I see Costco has these home surveillance systems for a few hundred dollars. If we went to the town, went to a house and said, look, your house faces that storm water drain, we want to know who's putting the dog poop bags down there, we will install a surveillance system on your house for free if you let us point one of the cameras at that drain, that homeowner will not only say yes, but they will review the tapes to find out who is doing it. It doesn't have to cost a lot of money. And most of the EPA requirements for pollution abatement, as I said, five of the six categories are not DPW categories. The sixth category is called good housekeeping, which is where DPW comes in, good housekeeping on sweeping the streets, things like that. But the reason I said this was a dishonest grab for money is because the EPA, which doesn't mandate spending, does tell us what the costs of compliance are. They did, as they're required to do, an analysis of what their requirements are, those six categories that I said. And as I said, every community is different across the country. Different communities have different pollution problems and different, uh, methods of handling that pollution problem. The EPA estimate of the cost per household of complying with their requirements ranges from 63 cents per household to a high of $60.44 per household. With an average, the national average, which is the total amount EPA estimates will be spent by the country who have to comply with this, divided by the number of households, the national average is $9.09 per household. Now, that was a 1998 study, those were 1998 dollars. There's a website I went to where you can put in, $9.09 in 1998 is $13.38 in 2016. So the national average for spending and compliance for EPA requirements is $13.38. And Milton's requirement, and if you look at a plot of all the dots of, of each community and what their per household expense is to, to pay for the requirements of the EPA, you know that the dots that are over at the $60.44, there's hardly any over there because the average was $9.09. Most of the dots are clustered around that $9 one. Milton is way off the charts. We are not even on that plot. We are so polluted in Milton that you have to wonder, how did we ever get rated one of the top 10 places to live? If our pollution abatement costs six times, more than six times the national average. I mean, we should be on the list of Flint, Michigan's water, not the top 10 places to live. We're paying more than six times the national average. And that's what happened. After we approved this enterprise fund, the Selectmen set the rates, set the amount raised, and this was a grab. It was an N1 around 2 and 1/2. It was taxation, and it was not in accord with what was sold to us. It was sold to us as we're required to spend this amount by the EPA, and here's an opportunity to do it and spread the cost around while avoiding 2 and 1/2, Proposition 2 and 1/2. If that had been done, this number here would be around 125,000 if we are the national average type community. Now, if you want to make an argument that we're not the national average type community, we, we have to spend much more than that. Uh, instead of 125,000, 150,000, 200,000? Okay, but we're talking half a million less than what is listed there if we are far above the national average in what is required to be spent.
Mr. Chinman, just a minute left. Okay.
So, I think, um, this, this hurts us when we have to go to the voters for a necessary override. And it should be, this good idea was a smaller idea than this. It should be around 125,000. The balance, which has to be paid, it's, it's services we want, it should go as part of the override to the public, say if you want to maintain these services, we need this amount of money to, to keep it, and that's the honest thing to do. It's not grabbing money in a prop 2 and 1/2 runaround, which is what I think this dishonestly does.
Ms. Agostino, were you, were you, no, were you waiting? I think you were next on this main motion.
Um, Mr. Moderator, I see that, uh, former Selectman Tom Hurley has come to the table, and I'm wondering if he might have some answers to the questions before adding more? Because he and the DPW, and she actually were the ones who did the calculations.
Well, um, Mr. Hurley doesn't have any particular status at the moment, and we have other speakers waiting to speak.
Are we starting a town meeting?
Yes, however, other members were in front of him. No, he's not a town meeting member, I don't believe any longer.
Oh. Oh, I was hoping that we could get an answer to some of the questions.
So, let's just go in sequence, so, but you're welcome, you had your comments, they're welcome to make them.
All right, then, I, I'm gonna move forward with my comments. Dianne de Tullio Agostino, Precinct 9. It's been an interesting couple of weeks since those bills came out for the storm water fee. And I'm sure everyone had questions. I mean, all you had to look at was, at was the tier structure. Tier 3, if you have 4,002, well, let me first of all mention that a fee structure is very different from a taxation structure. So I greatly appreciate Town Meeting Member Webster Collins' analysis. I mean, to have that type of a resource in this town is very important to understand where we need to go. Unfortunately, the motion that was made, you know, didn't meet the criteria of our regulations. So back up and think about a fee. A fee has to be for a service. So when I first made the call to Town Hall DPW, the explanation to me was, well, you pay taxes and your kids may not go to the public school system. That's not the same thing. Because I was asking, how was the calculation made on tier 1, 2, 3, and 4, plus the rate? It's an actual mathematical calculation. And there's a former Milton resident, MIT grad, who actually provided a graph and an analysis. But we don't even have to go to MIT to understand that tier 3 max dot at 4,225 square feet. So if you were at 4,226, instead of paying $52, you were gonna pay 156. That's a multiple of 3. Right away, I don't understand how the Board of Selectmen ever voted that. Um, I also had heard from many residents that there's no appeal process. And I said, that's absurd. If your calculations an error, then there has to be an appeal process. So I beg your time because I got my $104 check back. I got a refund from tier 4 down to tier 3. When I asked, after the explanation of taxes, you know, someone goes to school, I m- When I asked, after the explanation of taxes, you know, someone goes to school, I mentioned the actual square footage of my house is calculated. The amount of land I own is calculated. Those are actual calculations. So I was then informed by a lovely gentleman at the DPW, who I have great respect for, and he, you know, answered all the questions, that he could. He explained to me, "Oh, your house calculations." So he looked it up. He said, "They're actually an estimate using the GIS system." So 4225 gets charged $52. My estimate was 4,229. "Oh, Diane, you're within the margin of error. Send us an email and we'll refund your money." So I did get a $104 check back, which I greatly appreciate because I'll end up spending it in the override, right, Mary? The point is, they estimated using the G, GIS system. It was only an estimate. I attended the Selectmen's meeting tonight, and I heard both Deborah Felton, who manages Fuller Village, and Marvin Gordon discuss that when Fuller Village, the entire complex where many of our elderly parents live, bought the bill for $10,000, they were like, "Wait a minute. When we were built, we had to be built to be self-contained. They actually even clean their own storm drains. So all the water within their system doesn't run off into the town of Milton. It stays in their pools, I think, whatever it's called, Marvin would know. And so, that $10,000 bill, why would they be in charge of a fee?" If proceeding from there, I then emailed the town administrator, who tied me in with the head of the DPW. I needed to know how the calculations, how were these amounts calculated? There has to be some formula. There has to be some determination. And after about 15 emails, I received a reply that I sent off to the MIT grad because I said to her, I said, "Okay, I was a math major, but this doesn't give me any calculations." And she replied, "No, it doesn't. It's not an actual calculation to show any fairness between tier one, two, three, and four." And to Mr. Chinman's point, you know, maybe if everybody had a flat fee, then we'd all be better off and we'd feel like we were sharing. However, I do want to point out, so I feel very bad for the elderly, they're going to get hit in the pocket. There's going to be an extra maintenance charge. I want to read right from the state enterprise fund language. While Mr. Collins' motion was not in order, the Board of Selectmen does have another option, however, I don't think it's feasible because we do need an override this year. But in keeping with knowing what the facts are and knowing what our options are, we discussed it last week, Mr. Moderator, that since this is an enterprise fund, it's not really part of a contingent or non-contingent budget, but I do see it up there. The language reads, if, I cite here, and this is actually from the Mass General Law, 53 F.1 and 1/2, I mean, 53 F.1 and 1/2 enterprise funds, which I've been living with for about 20 years. "If the estimated income," meaning if the estimated income from the fees is less than the total appropriation, the difference shall be added to the tax levy and raised by taxation." So, we just heard from the DPW director that if we don't approve this money, we're going to get none of these services. The basins aren't going to be cleaned, the people will be laid off. However, it's right here that it would actually end up being, there's no need for an override. It just gets added to our taxes. And I'm not standing here saying that's the way we should go. I do believe the Board of Selectmen needs to go back, talk to what they said tonight where their consultants, figure out what was done wrong in 2017 because some people were overcharged, and I believe Fuller Village is one of them. And you can't charge a fee if you don't get the service. So if they're due money back, then we owe it to them. I know my own home, there's a 100-yard patio, and it was built, because my husband's an engineer, with complete drainage. I also know that the new blocks that people are using in their driveways, because we just did one, are pervious. So if the law is that you can charge for impervious surface, and yet people have, are installing better, even asphalt can be pervious. I know Walston Golf Course had to spend a lot of money for a particular asphalt. So I don't want to take up too much time. I'm sorry that I'm speaking again, but I think it's so important that we really know the facts and that we appreciate people like Mr. Collins and then Mr. Fuller speaking up for the elderly at Fuller. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Conlin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A previous speaker referred to the Board of Selectmen, I think I heard it three times, as dishonest. Those comments are irresponsible and offensive. We asked our former colleague, Tom Hurley, to come from the bleachers down to the front of the room to just consult with him a little bit on, confirm that some of our understanding of this is correct. Tom Hurley and DPW Director Joe Lynch spent an enormous amount of time over the last two years working on stormwater issues, and they did not act alone. They had advice from NEPA, the Napa River Watershed Authority, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, who helped put this program together, the utility fee, which we approved at a special town meeting in February of 2016. And it was based on the experience of several other towns, I believe eight or nine other towns. And many other communities are in touch with our DPW director and other employees in the town, and maybe even with Mr. Hurley when he was still a member of the board, to get advice because they're looking at doing the same thing in their communities. We had a lot of public meetings and public hearings, both on the bylaw, as well as when we went through the process of determining regulations and setting the rates last summer after Town Meeting had approved the bylaw. By no means was there a significant increase in either the amount or the services that come under this fee after Town Meeting acted and before the rates were set. At the time the Town Meeting acted, at the special town meeting in February of 2016, the amount that we were ballparking as an estimate was approximately $750,000. And at the time, Mr. Hurley, who was our chairman, made very clear, we were considering an override last year. We were working with the Warrant Committee towards an override budget. In the school committee, we made a decision later on in the process, well after February, to, to stay the override and put it off until this year because the stormwater article had passed, because we had some additional state aid, we had some savings and insurance, through a variety of reasons, but the stormwater was a big one of them, for why we did not go forward with the override last year. If we hadn't passed the utility fee, we'd be looking this year at a significantly larger override. So the number that we were talking about was not inflated after Town Meeting acted. It was well-known to Town Meeting at the time, as, as were the nature of the services, street cleaning, storm drain cleaning, and the various services that this covers. Yes, we have had to cover a lot of those services in past years, but there are new mandates and there are increased requirements, and it was made very clear to Town Meeting that if we were to, if the stormwater article were to pass, which it did, then the 700, $750,000 that would be raised through a fee would be reduced from the amount of the override last year. Same thing happened this year. We're not, we don't have a significantly larger amount because we're having, we're handling this through a different mechanism. This is the first year that we, last summer was the first summer that the Board set the rates. We started off looking at a two-tiered system for residential properties. We ended up going to four tiers because we wanted to be as equitable as possible, especially to small homeowners. And the fees for tier one, the residential rate is $28. The tier two, $36. Tier three, $52. And the top tier is $156 for the annual fee. Now, most of the complaints we've gotten have come from residents who are in the top category, the tier four category. And we have said months, several weeks ago, that we will look at that and see what we can do to change it and make it more equitable when we set the rates this summer for the following year. Mr. Hurley pointed out to us at the table that if there's a change in the law, or the regulations, or any other requirement, it's a lot easier to reduce it through an enterprise fund and through the rates than it is to come back to a special town meeting and to reduce an appropriation. The, the city of Newton has a $75 flat fee for residential properties for stormwater. If we were to adopt a flat fee, we'd see some of our lower-tier homeowners, they would have probably a pretty significant increase. So there's a lot of different things that we're looking at. We've committed to looking at the rates going forward and to making it as equitable as possible. There will be plenty of opportunity for the public to give input. We'll have public meetings or we'll have a public hearing on the rates, as we do for the water and sewer rates anyway. We'll have the same, we'll have a public hearing for the stormwater as we would for water and sewer. And while we understand the concerns that Marvin Gordon raised regarding Fuller Village because Fuller already has some measures in place to try to keep stormwater on the property without going, instead of it flowing out into the streets, and we know some homeowners have used rain barrels and other mechanisms, we've asked the Public Works Director to look at the topic of a credit. It's not an easy topic to come up with an answer to, but it is one that we're still looking at. We continue to like, to like to explore that. And we're going to look to other towns and see whether MAPC or NEPA are able to help us with that and what some of these other communities might be experiencing as they look for a credit system. But a credit system, we have found so far, is not easy to administer or to come up with that would be equitable and would still address the, the overall problem of stormwater and what the needs are to ameliorate the, the pollution that flows into the waterways. So if there is a change in the law, it's certainly something that the Board will be looking for and working towards addressing, but this is not the appropriate forum for that. The law has not yet changed, as our Town Council has stated, and we believe this appropriate, this article should be voted as recommended by the Warrant Committee, and we would urge you to vote in support of the Warrant Committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Gordon.
Thank you very much, Marvin Gordon, Precinct 8. I just want to point out, which I think I mentioned in my initial remarks, that I had asked at three successive Boards of Selectmen's meetings, how much of that $790,000 was attributable to what is now a possibly, at least in abeyance, federal mandate, and how much has been part of our DPW budget all along, or is a, a part that we have been used to, used to paying? And we heard, I've heard three successive times, that they couldn't give me the figure of how much of that was federal, which is, I'm reminding everybody, was the reason we, we voted this enterprise fund to start with, was the federal mandate. How much was federal and how much was what we already knew? And they said they didn't have the figure. But we heard that the Director of the Public Works get up and say that if this was cut, we would lose the leaf collection, we would lose, he would lose four employees, et cetera. We, it went on and on. So obviously, somebody must have calculated what was federal and what was what we always spent. I would have, and I'm with, actually, since we can't transfer the money and have it available to spend, I'm withdrawing my support for Mr. Collins' amendment to take it all away. But I would like to be able to, to say 100,000, 200,000, or whatever was federal, and cut it by that amount because we don't have to spend it until the, the legal issues are resolved. I did not mention in my first remarks that there's three, I think there's 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, only 10 or 11 have implemented this fee. Only 10 or 11. So we're on the cutting edge of putting an enterprise fee in. Why we have to be that, and it affects so much of our basic Public Works budget is, is a big question mark, and how much of it is just an effort to take it out from the restrictions of Proposition 2 and 1/2? If it's that, and if, if that's the majority of that money, then why do we have it right on the table that we're taking this out and putting it in enterprise fund so that we don't have to consider it in 2 and 1/2? That's, that's a question. I never got the answer for the figure. I'd love to be able to get up here and say, 200,000, 200,000 was the federal mandate, that's all, and, and due to our somewhat irrational president, putting in this, this reference back to the Supreme Court decision, which says that, which says that our stormwater system is not rather than navigable waters as called for in the Act. And he may be right on that and may be wrong, but, but as I said, he's been a disaster for our environment, but why should he be a disaster for, to our taxpayers in Milton? And I think that, I feel strongly about this, that I think that if we, if, if we don't, if we go ahead and, and appropriate the full amount, I'd love to see the Selectmen come up with a, an amount to cut as a guesstimate of what the federal, the federal portion is so that we could, we could vote 600 and some odd thousand or whatever, but instead of what we're doing. But failing that, I think that this is an issue that maybe the voters of the town should, should decide on, on a ballot question, which can be done from, under my understanding, if, if we, if we get the appropriate signatures within 10 days. That's, and I'd hate to see that because then the whole action of the Town Meeting would go down, and we would lose the leaf collection, we would lose four employees that we don't need to lose. But let's, but since I didn't get an answer for how much of it was federal and how much was it, of it was traditional, Town of Milton Public Works, why, why can't we come up with a, with a solution that isn't going to lead to a possible ballot question? Thank you.
Do you have an answer to that, Mr. Lynch? While you're rising.
Sure. Don't look Public Works. I'll answer that question or those questions that were raised, but I've always been paying attention as we've gone along on some of the other things that were raised. Just for the record, if you're looking at last year's number of 713, 219 being appropriated as, as the final number, we generated, we, Public Works Department, through our analysis, as inaccurate as it might have been, 8,338 bills, which generated a warrant of $715,624.3% accuracy, dead-on accurate. So I want to be very careful of that. We were also very cognizant of not creating a bureaucracy, to be precise. It was stated at Town Meeting in February, at Annual Town Meeting last May, and throughout the public hearing process that Selectmen Conlin referred to, as they considered the various rate structures. We could go out and measure every property and spend $300,000 that we would only have to pass that cost on to the people, and we didn't want to do that. We used photogrammetry. We used aerial photography. There is a margin of error. It was the premise for creating tiers in a range of tiers by 25th percentiles, 25% in each of the four tiers, that resulted in the average within those tiers. It worked, four tiers, one, two, and three. And there is a statistical quirk in tier four, which Selectmen Conlin has spoken to, which we have spoken to at a Selectmen's meeting in the past, to consider as we move forward to try to ameliorate that. So as far as calculating the numbers, very, very close to what the budget was, and I said, if anybody can get within .0, .3% of your total operating budget on 700,000, it's a pretty darn good task. So that's, that's that first item. Second item, I'm not going to, I'm not going to roll the dice on the situation of executive orders coming out of the Trump administration as compared to overruling all new rules and regulations that were put in place during the Obama administration and, and things of that sort. That's going to run its own course, and that's going to take, as a previous speaker said, several years. What's for certain is, the new permit came out last July. It was a ramp up to this July, which we have done. The difference in what Milton had been The difference in what Milton had been doing in those first 12 years of the permit and the new permit was about $120,000. It's a question I can answer now, from this floor, that's never been asked of me, until just this evening. So I don't know where, where the question was posed, but the number's about $120,000. It's almost exclusively attributed to the illicit discharge into detection-elimination system. Michael Chinman spoke so well weekly of it. It's not a matter of video cameras. It's knowing what your TMDL is, total maximum daily load, what is your pollution constituent, and you measure it to the source and determine what it is. The BMPs, for best management practices, that were spoken to earlier, 1998 study that might have been done, predates Phase II Niptes, predates our 12-year-old permit. Those numbers were based on a permit that had yet not even been issued then, let alone what's taken place in those 12 years and those new things that are required under the new permit. So those things like five out of the six being very easy things, we know that. Some things we do on a regular basis, some things we don't. But they're all pretty inexpensive. It's that last category of BMPs, good housekeeping, that sounds like it's a magazine made for housewives in the 50s, it isn't. It's where the onerous undertakings are. It is the requirement to sweep streets. It is the requirement to clean catch bases. It is to have an organic recycling program, to collect it within your community and to treat it and dispose of it and manage it. It is getting hazardous waste off the street. Those things that we have been doing, Selectman Hurley will speak to, was exactly the things that we didn't want to penalize this community on by carrying it into the enterprise as it moved forward. The other thing is, is all the debt service from the various stormwater capital expenditures in years past, the selectmen didn't think was fair to include in debt service for something that had not yet been enterprise. So they've left all the old debt service in the general fund, and for the first time this year, you're seeing a change. That's last year's appropriation for stormwater, the debt service in this year. It's a dramatic change. If you look at the operating expenses proposed in FY18 to FY17, it's $1,200 more than last year. Nothing has changed. It's still pretty reasonable. Salary and wages are a calculation of the creation of a part-time conservation agent and a full-time chief mechanic, both of which go into the overall Public Works operation and get assigned on a portioned basis on a percentage of work of the department, and that's calculated through the town accountant. It's a big number. But if you look at the actual operation, it's not a big number. So I apologize for the lengthy answers, but I think those are the sorts of things that came up. The misnomer I heard regarding equity of who has impervious services, who has recharge areas and stormwater management on their own property, is, is not an understanding that apparently we haven't, we haven't made clear. And what that is, is it's not what's happening on your property and rolling off into the street or into a brook. What's happening is, it's all those things we need to do around town, school parking lots, roadways, catch bases, the DPW yard, the equipment, the people that keep the thing running and finding the way that actually was a $713 cost and spread it around the community in which to recapture that cost. A thousand methods available, stated at both town meetings last year, stated throughout the public hearing process for rate setting. It was, how do you spread that number around? And what was ultimately decided was residential, break it into four classes, and everything else, including the not-for-profits, which had never been taxed before for these things. That was the methodology that, that, that sieved out through an awful long process of gathering information, analyzing, go back, reanalyzing, and presenting, and over the course of two months, you know, done in the light of day and televised. And, you know, that's what I have to say on that. I apologize, I'm a little, little choked up for a lot of reasons. So I hope that answers the questions, if there's anything I haven't answered, I'll be sitting right here.
Thank you. One sec. So I see no one else rising to speak. So at this point, reminder everyone, we're voting on the recommendation of the warrant committee as printed in your warrant, unamended, just a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. If you remember, folks, we also put off until tonight Article 49. So if you could turn to that page. Article 49 is a citizen's petition. You'll see in the warrant, I won't read the whole thing, it's just recommended that the town vote no appropriation at this time. But I was contacted by some citizens, we verified they were registered voters. Something? Yes, so I'll recognize Sarah Mabel Skilin, who's the grand poobah of the Milton Playground Planners, I think, correct? Yeah, you can go to the center, please, that's fine. Just introduce yourself and your address.
Well, if I could see. Okay, I'll just wing it. Hi, my name is Sarah Mabel Skilin. I live in Precinct Three. I know you all like to know those things. And I am one of the co-founding members of the Milton Playground Planners. We are a, you could, why don't you skip ahead? We are a group of citizens who formed about a year and a half ago in an effort to raise the funds needed to renovate our towns for playgrounds, which have not had any updates done to them in about 25-ish years. Our goals are very simple. There they are, to create playgrounds that are fun, safe, challenging, and inclusive, and to raise the money needed to do this. We started by meeting with the Parks Department and the Board of Commissioners to find out what was the deal with the playgrounds and why they hadn't been updated, and then went on to meet with a number of contractors at the current playgrounds to get estimates and renderings from them. We, pro bono, were very lucky enough to have the assistance of a certified playground safety inspector, who had worked with the town when the current playgrounds were installed decades ago, and who does this work with towns and schools across the area of New England, and had her advice and assistance also. So we have very gradually been moving forward. Sorry, I can't see. Okay, can you go? Okay. So we have very gradually been moving forward and raising money for the last year and a half through a variety of means, and have gotten to the point finally this spring where we were able to start work on one of the playgrounds, the first one being Shields Park. So this is what Shields Park looked like before. It had the one-place structure and the swings and the sandbox. And if you skip ahead, this, this, sorry, this was the rendering from the equipment contractor, with a contractor called Childscapes. They sell equipment from a company called Burke. And so this is what was proposed and what our committee of about 20 people on our Milton Playground Planners Committee, our playground expert, and a variety of citizens that we interacted with at various events that we held when we first started. This was a company that had the best offerings that we all felt really good about. So if you skip to the next one, so this is what Shields Playground looks like today with the work being done. So the inside of the playground is complete, and they're just trying to finish up some stuff on the outside, including a paved handicap walkway and various other minor things. But hopefully it should open by the end of this week. So, looks pretty good. We're very excited. So if you keep going, so this is just from a different angle. So the following few slides are the remaining three playgrounds of what they look like currently with no work having been done, and what the renderings, the proposed renderings for each of them are. So if you want, you can just kind of cycle through, and then when we get to that, I can... That's Kelly Field, that's the one by the middle school. This one, we still have to do some redesigning, because the location of the playground is not ideal due to some flooding issues. So we're trying to work out whether we can change or relocate the parameters of that So Andrews Park is, well, they're all very unique, and we are trying really hard to work with the needs of each playground's neighborhood and their demographics. You know, some of them are very close to baseball fields, and so there's little kids playing on the playground while their older siblings are playing baseball. And some of, you know, Kelly Field is near the middle school, so there's issue of the much older kids playing games and hanging out, and the little kids who live in the neighborhood, you know, there's all these competing factors that we're trying to weigh carefully and consider in our plans, and that our consultant is advising us on as well. But Andrews Park has the benefit of being the only one that is, has immediate proximity to paved parking as well as a fully fenced-in area. So we, for those reasons, selected that one as being a fully accessible playground for a complete range of needs and abilities. And that's what you saw. Go back one. Backward, backward, backward. One more. Forward, forward. Next one. Okay. So that's what this is showing you, is the rendering for the renovated Andrews Park with the complete accessibility. That's why it has a lot of ramps, and that's why it's very expensive, because aside from being big, all of those accessible features cost a lot more money. Okay, go ahead. So here's just a summary of our two, our consultant, the playground consultant, who is now being retained by the town as a kind of facilitator for the actual completion of the construction, and as well as the president of the equipment company, Tim Pesco, who obviously has lots of experience installing new playgrounds. Go ahead to the next one. So this is a breakdown of how the funds, a very simplified breakdown of how the funds kind of shake out and where the money goes. Equipment is obviously a big component of it, but the surfacing is the next biggest component. The, all the playgrounds will have what's called a poured-in-place rubber surfacing. It's that, I'm sure you've seen. It's kind of a soft, pebbly surface that is solid material, but it has kind of absorbency, I guess is how you could put it. And it's very low maintenance, and it's meant to last indefinitely. So it's kind of a one-time upfront investment. And this is our fundraising status to date. I'm just going to turn so I can see. So the dark green on the left are funds that we have raised kind of independently from a variety of sources, mainly from individual gifts and pledges of, you know, people who live in town, who are very kind and generous. The next kind of medium-green chunk is a $200,000 challenge grant that we got from the Copeland Foundation. Whereas when we have raised $200,000, the Copeland Foundation will grant us $200,000. We were about $88,000 towards that goal at the time that we submitted the citizen's The, okay, so that last green block is $125,000 that we got from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee last year. I don't know what fiscal year that is, my brain doesn't think in those terms, but it was a 2016 calendar year. And that was as a result of money that the Parks Department had requested prior to our inception for just repairing what was broken at the current playgrounds, getting things up to code. And since we then came to be in existence between when they asked for that money and when they received that money, it was decided that they would roll that, they would grant that money, and they would roll it in with our fund, so that it could all go toward brand-new equipment, instead of just repairing or replacing what was already there. So that is where we stand to date. We have a goal of $750,000, and that's what's needed to do the complete renovation of all four playgrounds, equipment, surfacing, fencing, walkways, yada, yada, yada. And, what's the next slide? Okay. So this is, so we've done a lot of various efforts for fundraising, a lot of events of different sizes. We had a gala, we've had trivia nights, we had a kid sock hop, which was super fun. And this is where we're trying to focus our efforts now in trying to...
Ms. Skilin, you've got about a minute left.
A minute?
About a minute left, yeah.
Oh, great. Okay. So, trying to collect some larger gifts to help us complete our efforts. If we color in this whole tree, we will be more than golden, and there's lots of opportunities if anybody wants to help support, even if, you know, if you can't do something this huge and wonderful. All support is very helpful and needed. So, that's it.
Anyone else like to speak to this recommendation? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Did I hear a no? One. The motion carries. Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, just a town clerk, just wanted to confirm, that we have to go to Article 50 and then go back to 44? Is that correct? Okay. So now we'll consider Article 50. Recommended that the town vote pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Law, is to establish by bylaw a revolving fund for money received from applicants before the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board for approval of developments which may impact traffic on roads in the town, to authorize the town administrator with the approval of the Planning Board to expend money from such revolving funds for studying traffic, making traffic improvements, or modifying traffic control infrastructure, and to limit to $50,000 the total amount which may be expended from such fund during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. The text of the proposed bylaw is included in the recommendation for Article 44. Chair would like to recognize Brian Furze, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Good evening. Sorry? Good evening. Brian Furze, Chairman of the Planning Board and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. First of all, I want to quickly take a moment to recognize Michael Kelly, who retired from the Planning Board after five years of service. He was a great member. We will miss him very much on the board, and I don't know if he's here tonight, but in any case, I would ask that you all recognize him with a round of applause. And I also want to recognize our newest member, Denny Swenson. I have great news for you. We are going to be recommending to the warrant committee that they change their recommendation and have this sent back to the Planning Board for further study. So we will not need a great deal of discussion tonight, but I do want to take two minutes to just discuss what this is about and the purpose of it. As the Planning Board, we're trying to start to think proactively and plan, and one of the things that we want to think about is traffic in this town and how new development projects impact the traffic that we already have. And one of the ways that you can deal with traffic, and that many of our, many of the communities in Massachusetts do deal with traffic, is by putting together TDM, Traffic Demand Management Plans, or mitigation funds. And these are funds that are basically put together to deal with traffic in a specific area of a town or a community. And if a project is deemed to have an impact upon that specific area, the Planning Board, as part of a special... as part of a special permit process, can recommend or require, as a condition of the permit, that a contribution be made to that fund in order to either study the impacts or study how the impacts can be mitigated from, on an overall basis, or can actually expend funds to go ahead and mitigate the traffic. A good example of this, I'm going to pull this off because I'm having to bend over. A good example of this would be East Milton. If we wanted to create a traffic mitigation fund for East Milton, for instance, in order to start being able to spend money to either study how we could improve traffic or actually spend money to improve traffic, this fund would allow us to look at individual projects that come before us as special permit requests and find small parcel owners. One of the problems with East Milton is if projects come before us, no project will really be able to bear the costs of fixing the traffic in East Milton. But if 10 individual owners came forward with a project and we had a traffic mitigation fund, each of those could have a condition that they contribute to a fund and eventually you have enough money to actually do something. So the idea of a mitigation fund is something that was created by the, excuse me, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or the MAPC. It's been initiated in communities like Marshfield, Woburn, Nevedum, Lexington, Dedham, Brantary, Framingham, Natick, Newton. And it's legal, it's been established by the judiciary that they're appropriate. But there are specific requirements, there are eight specific requirements that you must meet to establish a TDM or a Traffic Demand Management Fund. And one of them is that you have to have a bank account to put this money into as part of your TDM. And that bank account needs to be predetermined and specified in the plan. We don't have that bank account today and this article was moving to create that bank account so that if we did have a TDM, we would not have to put the money into the general fund. And then at the end of the year, if we didn't spend it, have it go to free cash, which has happened in other communities. We need to refine the language. We need to specifically refer to some traffic demand, traffic or TDM language in the MAPC. We need a little bit more time on this. We came out a little bit too fast probably, but hopefully you'll see that as our efforts towards planning and thinking ahead. And hopefully we'll be back in October with some better language. So I would ask the warrant committee to consider amending its recommendation to send this back to the Planning Board for further study. Thank you.
I hear a second. So we have a motion to refer back to the Planning Board, made and seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion to refer? Warrant Committee, your opinion?
Warrant Committee supports the motion for a revised recommendation.
So this is a motion to refer Article 50 back to the Planning Board. All in favor of the motion to refer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion's unanimous. So with that, we've completed the requirements that were holding up Article 44. So now we'll return to Article 44, which we postponed, I think, on Thursday. It's in a green sheet. As you read through, you'll see some red text. It's lengthy. I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading. And seconded. All in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. No waive the reading. With that, we will start with, anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, Mr. Morash.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct 2. Two years ago, I spoke about this revolving account funds and I asked that at the next town meeting, we get an account of what the Parks Department was spending $100,000 on. That never happened. That $100,000 that I asked to be, to have an answer of what the Parks Department was spending in their revolving fund, never happened at the next town meeting. So, Mr. Moderator, I support all these revolving funds, but I have a friendly amendment, if I may?
Please. By the way, this was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, so it goes to them for consideration. Would you like to read your amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to add a Section C that reads, quote, "And further recommended that at the first town meeting of the new fiscal year, the town boards or departments with revolving accounts shall report to town meeting the amount of funds raised in their previous fiscal year, the amount remaining in their revolving account at the end of the fiscal year, and in accounting of what expenses were made against their revolving account."
Would you, there's a second? Do you have, you still have some time left, Mr. Marsh, would you elaborate?
The reason for this is, I think we just heard very clearly from that nice presentation by the playground planners. I don't mean to pick on the Parks Department, but why not? They're looking for funds to repair and replace equipment, playground equipment in parks. We don't know what that is being spent now, that revolving fund. Perhaps some of that money could have bought new playground equipment. But we don't know. And all this is asking is, you got $100,000 of revolving fund, what did you do with it? And let us know what it is. I've asked the town accountant, I've asked the town treasurer, it's in the, what do we call that nice book? The annual report. But it doesn't tell us what they spent all this money on. So, just to give us a better idea of what we're doing, so we, as town meeting members, we can answer our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend? Coming down, sir? Yes. By the way, if town meeting members, if you're sitting in the back, it's hard for me to see you. You know, we like to have you sit down front because I can see you a little more easily.
Anthony Chichello, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 4. And I think we just referred Article 44 back to the, for study, so I think we want to delete Number 10 on the first chart in A because I don't think we want that to be included. So if the warrant committee accepts that as a friendly amendment, it'd be done.
I think we're on one amendment at a time at the motion, moment. Or rather, two at a time, actually. So if we could, if I could ask you to just pause for a moment, let's deal with Mr. Morash's motion to amend and then we can come back to you, Mr. Chichello. Does anyone else like to speak to the motion to amend? It's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. Okay. So now we have a motion to amend, so Mr. Morash's Section C has been added in. And Mr. Chichello, you're up.
Yes, I renew the motion I made and also I think I'm suggesting that Number 9, just above that, the reference in 2017 Annual Town Meeting, Article 44, should say 45.
So let's make sure we've got all these points. So you'd like to modify Number 9 in the first table?
To say Article 45 instead of Article 44.
And what was the other component to your, for these friendly amendments?
Number 10 should be deleted, I believe, because we didn't create that fund.
So you'd like to both change Number 9 to 45 and delete Row 10 from the table?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion to amend? I'm sorry, someone, you're right, we have to speak to the warrant committee and our first parties, you're right. Let's let them confer. You ready?
The warrant committee supports both motions to amend.
Thank you. With that, all in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. Okay, we're now back to the article as amended. Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 44 as amended, please, someone coming down? Sorry. Ah, sorry, mister. Darnell, is that you?
Yes, it is. Darnell Turner, Precinct 1, former member of the warrant committee. I just want to get a point of clarification from the Section C there. If, and Ms. Morash, are you asking to have the heads of those departments be here at a point certain throughout the town meeting to give a report, or can that report be made in a written format? I just wanted a point of clarification because to require, you know, the different boards and heads and everything to be here for a point uncertain, it's sometimes a little rough on our employees of the town. So I would want some point of clarification on what would be acceptable as a report. Thank you.
I think the selectmen are conferring.
I think the warrant, the warrant committee agrees that if notified in advance, this is something that we would print in the warrant for public consumption and something that is in print for everyone to see.
Seeing no one else rushing to the podium, all those in favor of Article 44 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous? We're through Article 44. Article 51. So, ladies and gentlemen, there've been a number of citizens that have asked to speak to both 51 and 52. They've all been certified by the clerk as registered voters. There are some, there's a presentation and some, and some articles that are, some motions to amend that are coming up. So why don't we get into this? I hear a motion to waive the reading, is there a second? Any discussion of waiving the reading? None? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We'll waive the reading. So we'll recognize the chair of the Planning Board to speak to Article 51.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Furz, Chair of the Planning Board. Just to keep the evening moving, we're going to ask the, Mr. Ned Corcoran on behalf of the developer to speak and would like Alex Whiteside, Planning Board Member, to follow him. Thank you.
Very well. Mr. Corcoran, you recognized? So folks, by the way, I think I should just remind everyone, we'll, you know, we get, it gets hot in some of these Planning Board topics, so let's be respectful and avoid some of the incendiary, incendiary language we've heard in perhaps prior town meetings. So thank you very much for that. Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If I just have a moment, I'm going to load this on.
Okay, which one of these, Ice House meetings you want to do? Okay. Five, four? That one?
That one.
You're on your own.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ned Corcoran, Precinct 3. And I'm an attorney here representing Northland Residential and its principal, Jack Pauli, who is the proponent, the developer for the property known as the Walcott or the Carberry property on Canton Avenue. This is a bylaw that we spent a significant amount of time, public hearings, public meetings, neighborhood meetings, et cetera, over the last 16 months. Probably spent 36 evenings out, various meetings, arriving at a bylaw that was recommended by the Board, by the Planning Board. And we appreciate the work that they put in, in the process. So it's called a greater states bylaw. And there are really three sort of greater states, if you will, on Canton Avenue. There are in order the Eustace Estate, which is roughly here, the Bartola Estate, and the Carberry, or the Walcott Estate. This is Carberry Lane, this is Canton Avenue, this is Blue Hill Avenue, this is Fuller Village, this is the Blue Hill Ski Area. There are three really magnificent properties. This is a sort of existing conditions of the Carberry property. Now it turned it, but this is Canton Avenue as you come in by Blue Hill. And it is 47 acres with 1,600 feet of frontage on Canton Avenue. It's several parcels that are combined into a single large development opportunity. Northland Residential currently owns an 18-acre piece of property acquired from the Carberry family last May, and they have an option to purchase everything that remains for a total of 47 acres. The property slopes dramatically from bottom to top. This property is about 30-some acres. It was formerly owned by, by the Carberry family. It was acquired by DCR back in the early 90s to, as part of the Blue Hill Reservation. There is an existing manor house, what we call the Casey Farmhouse, otherwise known as the Devon's House, Walcott Mansion. It was, it was the home of Governor Walcott, who served as the governor of the Commonwealth in the late 1800s. And a number of other properties. There are some significant features, as I said, lawns, roads, and groves. As you drive out Canton Avenue, Canton Avenue being on the bottom, there's this magnificent lawn, we call it the manor house lawn. And the manor house itself, built in 1875, it is about 8,500 square feet. It's a magnificent house and it will be preserved under this bylaw. In the middle of the property with an existing rear driveway, that's what we call the Casey Farm Meadow. It's a four-acre meadow that is maintained as such. And the Devon's House, which is located just off of the meadow driveway. And then finally, Walcott House itself, which is up to the rear, sort of to the rear of the property, surrounded by some what we call primeval forest, very thick woods that form the sort of the southwesterly boundary of the property. So there's several options that could be pursued under the law. One is a standard subdivision. Here's Canton Avenue. This shows 22 two-acre house lots under, under our current residents' public zoning. I would clear cut the land, blow up the- I would clearcut the land, blow up the property, eliminate all structures, and start over with one, two, three, four, five new next-door neighbors to the Carberry Lane subdivision. One, two, three, four, next-door neighbors to Kevin Walker, who lives on this side of the property. Two driveways, wardways, and cul-de-sacs, other lots in between. It would be, if you figure one and a half children per unit, it'd be thirty-three children. A number of those would attend the Milton Public Schools. It'd be a significant new impact on our budget. We think that they'd be roughly neutral in terms of new tax revenue versus cost associated with that. Separately, we could pursue a single, a clustered subdivision under a provision of the bylaw. That also would clearcut a lot of the land under that provision, and I recently secured the first permit on behalf of Martha and Dennis Burke on Highland Street. Thirty-five percent of the property would be reserved as, as open space, but the balance would be developed as single-family house lots. And most of those are shown, they're, they're made to look like Carberry Lane with large houses and swimming pools and the like. That would have a negative impact on the town with the tax value being less than the cost to educate kids. I'm not going to show the third alternative, which is really available under the law, but if the bylaw were not to pass, then the alternative would really be processed under the comprehensive permit, while we're looking somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred and fifty units, either condominiums or rentals, and that would destroy the town's budget. The alternative is, as we've shown, and this is a brand-new plan that came out as a result of an agreement that was reached with the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association at the end of last week. The bylaw says fifty-eight market rate units on the property. We've agreed to reduce that to fifty-four in twenty-nine buildings. It was a spur in a previous plan that we had nailed to the town meeting a couple of weeks ago, that showed a to- a total of ten units along the bottom. A spur that came roughly to here with two, four, six, eight, ten. The unit that was worked out with Hale Smith and other members of the Neighborhood Association, we agreed to reduce to fifty-four without a reduction in the affordable housing count. We've agreed to hold the town harmless at the, at the rate of six affordable units, even though if you were to round, you could round down to five, but we've agreed to hold to six. And at the request of Hale and others, agreed to create what we think would be sort of a great estate compound, so that we would preserve the Devon's House and create two other units in some form. This is a, a current level of thinking. So that as you appear from Canton Avenue, all you would see would be the manor house, the manor house lawn, the, the Casey Farm field, and a compound here. Here is a pine grove and other trees vegetated that will be left untouched. Other significant features of this are that we create one main new entryway into the property. We relocate from the existing entry to a point that is well away from these two driveways in this driveway, so that it's a, it's, it's, it works better from a traffic perspective. This driveway into the manor house would be maintained as an, as an emergency access only. And this driveway, which provides an easy access into the Walker property, would be terminated at this point, and, and existing pavement would be, would be converted to to grass or other structures, so that there would be no development at all within this area.
Mr. Corcoran, you got about two minutes left.
The big impact is that at fifty-four market rate townhouse units, there are no children, no unit, tax revenue determined by the tax assessed at about seven-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. We preserve, as I say, all of the things that are great. Sixty percent of the property is dedicated to open space, and the open space would be either DCR or some other entity, so that it wouldn't be owned by the condominium association, and that would be preserved in perpetuity. The new driveway is shown, is infilled, and this is the new driveway end as it disappears around the corner into the property. From a traffic perspective, we did a quick, we did a traffic analysis last summer, counting trips at Quistock Brook Home, Inc., and two other age-restricted developments that Jack has done in Belmont. We came up with average trip analysis and compared them against a thirty-three unit clustered subdivision and a twenty-two unit subdivision. And the key numbers here are this. At a peak hour, mid-afternoon, early morning, net new traffic associated with fifty-four unit plan produces twenty-eight trips in the peak hour, twenty-nine feet in the, in the PM peak, compared to twenty-five and twenty-seven for twenty, twenty-two unit subdivision. And one of the reasons for that is you have much less come and go without children. So how does the plan respond to the master plan? It preserves historic streetscapes. It preserves historic structures. Sixty percent of the, of land is dedicated to open space. It enhances walkability. There'll be connections to the Blue Hill, Blue Hill Trail system on top in conformance with DCR requirements. It provides significant housing variety, new housing for over fifty-five. Six affordables to be developed at other locations in town. And the plan, in conju- after talking to the Affordable Housing Trust, is to acquire distressed properties, either at foreclosure or otherwise, restore them and sell them to young families at affordable rates. And finally, it improves the municipal tax base with excess of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in net new taxes. So thank you for your consideration. And we ask that you please vote yes on this article.
Mr. Whiteside?
Alexander Whiteside, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine, and a member of the Planning Board. The Planning Board has a few friendly amendments to its own article, and maybe we could put them up on the board. Okay, well, the Section Two, we've mentioned that we're going to preserve the Devon's House. That's the, in number five, and create the, the Colonial Cluster. Section Six, the number fifty-eight, goes down to fifty-four. There'll be a total of fifty-four units. Section Seven. This simply said, this indicates that you're, there are going to be no new townhouse units except the two units constructed in conjunction with the Devon's House within five-hundred-and-fifty feet of Canton Avenue. So you'll have your two existing houses, the Queen Anne House and the Colonial Revival House, which will be the only houses within that setback. In nine A. We've, by reducing the number of units to fifty-four, if you take ten percent of that, you would get five-point-four. And under the previous way we compute affordable housing, that would be five units. We've changed it to round the fraction upwards, so that we are back at six affordable units rather than five. And Section Thirteen. We have increased the square footage, Section Thirteen-C, the square footage from thirty-three-hundred to thirty-six-hundred, which is basically the square footage that's necessary for the type of building being built. We have a amendment to subsection thirteen-A six. This is from Emily. Thirteen-A six, which basically makes it very clear that we want these, these fixtures, lighting fixtures, to comply with the dark sky requirements of the International Dark Sky Association. So those are the, those are the friendly amendments. And we accept them. Would the town meeting like to accept them?
We'll need an opinion from the warrant committee to... If you would, Mr. Belprin?
Warrant Committee accepts that all friendly amendments.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Whiteside, or you?
It's all the amendments.
Okay.
I have a few comments, though.
You still have some time.
This is a, this is a good article. This is a, this is a really good article. This is an iconic setting with some really outstanding open space and some very nice houses. And the zoning is going to preserve the open space and is going to preserve the houses. And it's been a truly cooperative effort. We have a developer who appears, from everything that I've, I've seen, to be an excellent developer. He likes to listen. He likes to try and address concerns, and I think that what he wants to achieve is the best possible development. And having a developer like that is very important. The neighborhood has been engaged. It has expressed its views, and all the views, there are different views in the neighborhood, but the developer and the planning board have attempted to synthesize the views as best as possible to meet them as, as best as maybe. And I think that we've achieved a lot by reducing the, reducing the number and making sure that there are no houses within five-hundred-and-fifty feet of Canton Avenue. We've gone a long way by reducing the number of units next to the neighbor, Mr. Walker, and by having a significant hundred-and-seventy-five-foot setback from the lot line. This is, this is protection. And it's not only protection for him, it's protection on the other side, a hundred-and-seventy-five feet on the other side from the neighbors on Carberry Lane. We have gone, we have done our best to protect the interests of the neighbors, the interests of the neighborhood, and the interests of the town. As Mr. Corcoran pointed out, if this were a standard subdivision, it would be, I think, unfortunate. It would be like many other subdivisions you've seen. It would be expensive, and it would not preserve open space. There'd be no affordable housing in it. There'd be little immediate tax benefit to the town. What they propose is going to be age-restricted, fifty-five or over, meaning that when it's up and running, the town is likely to receive eight-hundred thousand dollars of tax benefit, and the set-off against that would be far less than the set-off against the taxes received from a conventional subdivision. The conventional subdivision wouldn't preserve trees. It couldn't avoid clearcutting if the developer were to want to do so. This developer doesn't want to do a conventional subdivision. He also doesn't want to do a forty-B development. He wants to do what he has worked the last sixteen months, as shown in this zoning, as, as permitted by this zoning. Were this zoning not the pass, it seems quite possible that this developer would sell to another developer, and it is possible that something, a forty-B developer might buy the land. People who are acquainted with Randolph and Canton may have seen the development that Avalon Homes built there on a big portion of forested open land, and it's, it's not a, it's not what we want.
Mr. Whiteside, you got about a minute left?
How many minutes?
About one.
All right, well, let me know. This preserves open space in an outstanding way. Three fine homes will be, will be saved and will be set properly. The developer, we've got four, six units of affordable housing. They probably will be off-site, which will mean that they will be developed probably in duplexes throughout the town. They would be, have a preference for town residents, town employees. Income limit for a family of four would be about eighty-two thousand dollars. And they would offer, they would give a real ownership opportunity for some of the younger couples who will live in Milton. Nothing is not an option in this case. A lot of people would like nothing to happen. I would like nothing to happen, but it's not an option. What you have before you-
Mr. Whiteside, if you could-
Is an option, and it's a good one.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Conlon, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports the Planning Board's and the Warrant Committee's recommendation, and we just wanted to notify town meeting that this evening- recommendation, and we just wanted to notify Town Meeting that this evening we signed a development agreement with Northland that would really protect the interests of the neighborhood and give them an extra level of protection because it addresses this particular development that Attorney Corcoran has presented this evening. The development agreement would be recorded with the Registry of Deeds. It's something that the Neighborhood Association and the abutters and broader neighborhood interests have had some input into. There have been a number of public meetings, and it's something that we discussed over a number of meetings, particularly very recently. It addresses a number of topics such as design, preservation, affordable housing, construction management, public access, all of the things that were issues raised by neighbors and abutters and members of the planning board and planning staff. And commitments that the developer was willing to make to the neighborhood are recorded and preserved in the development agreement. So it adds an extra level of protection. Of course, the whole project would be subject to the planning board's approval, and the planning board would have a separate process. What we signed as a development agreement is outside of that special permit process and is different than what the planning board's role is, but we do want to make that clear that we have entered into this agreement and it will be recorded. And we believe it adds an extra layer of protection for the abutters in the neighborhood. So we urge you to support this article for the many reasons that Mr. Whiteside and Mr. Furz have stated. Thank you.
Folks, the chair will now recognize Mr. Kevin Walker. He contacted me about two weeks ago. He has a presentation. I've reviewed it. It's relevant. So, Mr. Walker, you're 10 minutes.
How does this work?
Ms. Getman will pull up your presentation.
How do I do it?
I think she has it.
Oh, the first slide.
By the way...
It's not yet?
An option. If you stand at the side mic, you can see your slides rather than turning around all the time. It's up to you.
Okay, just a second.
I know a guy that used to do this a little bit, so...
I'll use a number-two pencil. Mr. Moderator, thank you. My name is Kevin Walker. I'm at 1776 Canton Ave., Milton, and hello, Town Meeting members and residents. I am certainly in disagreement with Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Whiteside. I am at a point where I believe that there is room for compromise. I do take exception that 40B is mentioned every time, and I think a lot of the people who are at these meetings, they weren't as open as you would be led to believe that 40B would be coming if we would not take what they had to offer. So I think we can skip over this part pretty quick because we know it is squad zoning. So if it doesn't work out, there's a good chance that this will go to court. My property is being devalued. I would rather have neighbors, I would rather have cluster housing, and I'd rather have cluster housing that is a real cluster housing plan, not one that is shown. If you look at their cluster housing plan, you will notice that open space is not obtainable by all the lots. That's not a cluster housing plan. So, here's my residence here, my wife and I built 12 years ago. I knew the amendment was coming, so I changed that there. You'll see the wall caught is the blue square. Now, within 100 feet are townhouses of the Walcott, Governor's Mansion, 1800s, and a row 25 feet off. Now, this is not preservation. This is not historic preservation. There's also language in this bylaw that says you can tear down up to 20% of these homes. So now, I thought the three units would go up there, but they tuck two there and add one there. I would like these three units to go, and I think the other three units should go up there. Now, the site plan, you'll notice, you will see, this will look like a mountain in New Hampshire. You will see the townhouses right up the hill, okay? Don't believe it, because I looked at it today. And with the grade changes, we're informed with the drastic grade changes. Now, I'm a developer and a builder, living in Jamaica, doing public construction work. To build an indoor hill, you're going to have terraces, retaining walls, clearcutting. If you go down and there's development down at Woodmere, that whole eight acres was clearcut. You're talking about 10 to 12 acres up there for those 50 condominiums, townhouses. That's all going to be clearcut. Infrastructure erosion, we're talking about a septic tank for all those units. Where's that going? proximity of the townhouses to the Walcott house. Look at it, it's surrounded. So, next please. So, the picture at top is what the developer provided the neighborhood, panoramic view that looks flat. This is the grade. This is that hill. So right where those trees are, that's where those condominiums, the 550 feet. It's not 550 feet from my house. Next, please. So, Northland, there's no historic preservation. They use the word preservation, they use the word historic, but they don't use them together. They're tearing down, they're tearing down, I think it's around six buildings now. The developer is surrounding. It's not, you know, it's natural historic characteristic. It does not need the master plan. Townhouses built into a hill do not need the master plan. Next, please. So there's the Walcott mansion. 1800 is the manor house. Now, the manor house, everybody on Carberry Lane is going to have a nice manor grass. No, I get condominiums built into the hill. So that's the Walcott house. You have, you saw the picture, look at the distances. That's not preservation. Where's the lovely landscape spoon preserved? Next, please. These houses are being demolished. These houses are all on the Massachusetts Historic Register. This is the caretaker's house, the barn, 1870. Just tear it down. Don't incorporate colonial construction into a colonial development. Buy the townhouses up on the hill. Next, please. A developer now is on Brushhill Road. He paid $2.4 million, eight-plus acres from the highest size, and is building 36 condominiums. They're selling them in the $900,000 range. Look at the open space down there. There is none. Okay, this, look at the doors, garage doors, look at the roofs. This developer, we're lucky to have this developer. Next, please. This is what we got. These are townhouses in Milton. Next, please. This is the map. I still don't know how this was a planned unit development. How the heck was this? It's supposed to have two things, open space? There's the open space. Next. So, 40B threats, based on misinformation as of right, if the plans that are provided are non-accurate. Does not require 40B housing units on site. That's fine. You got an extra unit. That's great. I think it's great. But what about this net cost buyout? That's what I'm going to talk about. Is the affordable housing buyout? Why are we talking about Governor Stoughton's land in a bylaw or trust? There's not, no impact fees, nothing. What about $10,000 for a townhouse? Hey, the guy, he was here the other day, he goes, we don't have units. What about some money? Said a dangerous precedent. Yep, we already did that with Woodmere. That's why he's back. Next, please. So this is what I'm proposing, and I'd like to have the backing. Let's take his sentence out. There's no reason to mention Governor Stoughton Trustees. 50%. He don't get any affordable housing units until he is sold. 50%. How do we change that to 25? Doesn't Milton deserve their units sooner? 50%? That's unbelievable. Next. This should be out. Payment, the gentleman was here the other day, there shouldn't be anything in there. If he can't find the land, Mr. Whiteside, you said duplexes. So why would there be a buyout at the net cost? Is that after you back all your expenses? That's crazy. That comes out, Governor Stoughton isn't part of this. Next, please. So, we've gone to 54. I would like, where my house is, compromise, 51 units. Take out the three directly in front of the Walcott mansion. Okay? And let's define immediate vicinity. Any new townhouse structure shall be located at least 125 feet from existing historic building structure. That's what I'm looking for. Next, please. Three options. If a man or a gentleman who would bring this amendment forward, and if this amendment gets incorporated and passes, number two, it could go back and really fix this thing, and the town would benefit even more than what I'm proposing. But number three, it passes the way it is. I brought a $10,000 check with me for the Affordable Housing Trust to show you I'm here in good faith. I haven't seen anybody's money in this. I haven't seen plans, I haven't seen 3D models. I've seen nothing, nothing by the developer. But I'll tell you right now, I have no choice but to take the town of Milton to court on squad zoning. And it's going to be easy. I don't know if we're going to win, but there's no benefit to the town with the current bylaw. None, not the way this is structured. So, I'd rather not do that. I'd rather shoot the thing down or add my bylaw amendment in there. This gentleman offered to bring it forward, I'd gladly pass it out. You're getting rid of three units, you give a nice buffer, and you just took out entitlements of the affordable housing. Now he has to deliver the affordable housing that you have offered, and I agree. I mean, this town needs to get its act together. Someone has to start reading these things. But I do appreciate everybody's efforts here. I see how hard you work. You have a lot of paperwork in front of you, a lot of numbers, and I'm certainly not a politician, as you can tell, but I've been in Milton my whole life, and my mother's the one that said my father bought a lot up in Blairbrook. And my mother said, go to Milton. My son's in Pierce, and a son of Tucker, and my 15-year-old daughter is at Font Point. And they're not giving me any favors, looking out my window. So, and my property value is going to go down. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Frizzetti, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting member, Precinct 7, and member of the Borah Cemetery Trustees. I would like to move to amend this article. If you go to Section 6, under the number of units, amend the first sentence to substitute 51 in place of 58. Should I keep going, or should I wait for them? Okay. Do you have another copy? All right, and then in Section 9, under provisions of affordable housing, subsection B, location of affordable units, delete the last sentence of the subsection. And then in subsection E, under sale and resale, amend the last sentence to substitute 25% in the place of 50%. And then in subsection J, payment in lieu of providing affordable units, delete the subsection in its entirety. And then in subsection K, Governor Stoughton Trust units, delete this section in its entirety. And then in Section 14, under site plan, subsection B, 4, site plan, design standards, insert the following at the end of the second sentence, comma, and in any event shall be located at least 125 feet from each such existing dwelling.
So while the warrant committee clerk is typing that in, is there a second to this motion? I hear a second. I know it'll take a few minutes to type it in. Would anyone like to speak to this motion to amend? I'll wait until it gets up on the screen so everyone has a chance to benefit from it. Yes, Mr. Corcoran?
Motion to amend is not acceptable to the developer.
That was clear. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion?
Malcolm Lawson, Precinct 1. I'd just like to ask one question. Due to the scope of this project and the remoteness, has there been any consideration given to a sprinkler system for all the property?
Brian Furz, Chairman of the Planning Board. That would be something that would likely come up during the special permit process. This is just the zoning article. So that would be something that would be a specific that would be addressed under a special permit process. Okay, sorry. That would be something that would be addressed as part of the special permit process. So that is a specific that we wouldn't typically put into zoning. That would be something that would be a specific addressed as a condition of unapproval under the special permit application.
Okay, and I had one second question, if I may. This does seem like a substantial change to this article to be dealt with on the floor. Could this be postponed to tomorrow night, and we could all have a printed version and
So just for the benefit of the audience, we can make sure the sections are right. So Section 6 went from 58 to 51. Sorry, 54 to 51, pardon me, right? Then we're in Section 9. There should be an insertion, a deletion from subsection B. Do we see that on the screen? Okay. Subsection E, and then the last sentence. It said 25% in place of 50. Do we have that? Okay. Section J, delete the whole subsection. You got that? Subsection K, delete the subsection. Okay? Now we're Section 14. Insert a phrase at the end of the second sentence. Just reading the text. Let me just get to that. Subsection B, Roman numeral 4, site plan design standards. That is right. There was one sentence. Should be Section 6. So we're in Section 14, subsection B, Roman numeral VI, 6. Okay. Now we've got the text there. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend? Mr. Johnson? I'm sorry, Mr. Furz, were you still speaking? I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
Done? Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Scott Johnson, Precinct 9. I'm a little concerned that we've seen zoning, this cluster zoning, getting into two-acre zoning areas a lot. And I just have a question. Does this bylaw, before the amended changes, or even with the amended changes, does it set a precedent for any other properties in town, such as like on Hillside Street, like we're seeing at Ford Ranch Road, in Brush Hill? And I'm wondering if we're causing ourselves to be backed into a situation where we're going to have a precedent where this is going to affect the character of the town in many more places. It seems to be encroaching a lot of places. That'd be my question.
Mr. Johnson, do you have a couple of questions you could tee up at once?
That's pretty much it.
That's it? Okay, good.
I got one other, and that's... Oh, I got one other, and that's, what's the proximity of this property to the sewers, to town sewer, too? That's another question, but...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whiteside?
Alexander Whiteside, Member of the Planning Board. This is not a precedent. This has happened before. I've been, Inquisit Brook was zoned, Residence A, and it was reason, it was zoned so that Inquisit Brook could be built. This is the way we do the, I've been Fuller Village, Winter Valley, the St. Pius property. The Town Meeting generally likes to know what they're getting before they vote to rezone. And that's the way we've done it. And it isn't a precedent, other than the fact that we are following what we've done in the past. Other proposals can be made and will be judged on their, on their merits, not because we did this.
Thank you.
Could I?
What's the, what's the proximity of the property to town sewers? How far away?
It's a mile or so, I think.
A mile?
It's, I think about a mile.
The closest, Ned Corcoran, Precinct 3, on behalf of the developer. The closest sewer, I think, is around the corner at Brush Hill and Blue Hill Avenue, several hundred feet away. The way that the cluster works, because it's age-restricted, there's no need to tie into town sewer. We don't plan to tie into town sewer. We'll be installing an onsite septic, septic system instead.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the, do you have more answers, Mr. Whiteside, or?
A couple of other things. Reducing it to, taking out the, taking out three more units. I, I, I know that getting down to 54 was really tough. And I think that 51 might be a, might well be a deal breaker. The idea of using the Governor Stoughton property is simply that if the trustees, there are several historic buildings there which have the possibility of conversion to, to housing. If the trustees and the developer can agree that a certain number of units be put into these buildings, probably two, two or three, then that's something that should be permissible. That's all the Governor Stoughton Affordable Housing Provision means. It allows for this possibility. The payment in lieu of providing affordable units is, is really a failsafe. It, and if there is a problem, or more importantly, if the Affordable Housing Trust says, "We have an opportunity, and we would like to get some immediate money," this would give them that permission. The sale upon, or, or the marketing of an affordable unit at the time that a sale of 25% of the market units are sold is, is not unreasonable. That's the only part that isn't.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion to amend? By, by the way, a motion to amend is just a majority vote, even though the overall article is a two-thirds vote. So, all those, I'm sorry, I forgot the Warrant Committee once again. Just trying to run over you guys tonight, I'm sorry.
Warrant Committee does not support the motion to amend.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion fails. So now we're back to the primary article itself. Does anyone wish to speak to the primary article as amended by the friendly amendment? Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. In the presentation that Mr. Walker was giving out tonight, essentially at the end there, he, I guess, threatens the town with a lawsuit with regard to spot zoning. It seems to me like a lot of the zoning we pass is spot zoning. I wonder if there's someone who can explain the issue of spot zoning to us, what the likelihood is that we would or wouldn't prevail in such a lawsuit, and also what anyone thinks the expected cost might be of any such legal challenge.
Mr. Whiteside?
Mr. Corcoran will cite a recent case on spot zoning. But first, I'd like to say that this particular article applies to any parcel with 46 acres and 1,500 feet of frontage with two pre-1900 buildings and one pre-1950 building. And although unlikely, parcels could be assembled in town of 46 acres, and they would qualify for this zoning. It's not spot zoning. However, Ned, I think that you have a case.
Mr. Corcoran, what, what are you answering for us here? Are you speaking to the article now, or are you answering a question?
I'm answering a question on spot zoning.
Okay. I'm not, perhaps we should get our attorney to answer a question on spot zoning. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Hello, Lauren Galvin, Town Council's Office.
Just speak, speak up, ma'am, sorry.
Lauren Galvin, Town Council's Office. I handle many of the spot zoning cases for the town. The zoning amendment would not, most likely not be held by the court to be spot zoning. Spot zoning is not, courts do not find zoning amendments to be spot zoning when an economic benefit, or a benefit, a public benefit is conferred upon the town, such as the historic preservation that's a part of this amendment, such as the affordable housing component that's a part of this amendment. Any sorts of benefits of the town that would be preserved would save amendment from being considered a spot zoning. The town recently won a case, a challenge to the Planned Unit Townhouse Development zoning amendment that was challenged as spot zoning. And the court found, in fact, that that was not spot zoning because it, it preserved historical structures. It had affordable component. And it could apply, because these zoning amendments could potentially apply to other parcels in the town, they would not be considered spot zoning.
Mr. Sloan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Sloan from Precinct 10. I wanted to take a minute and focus our attention on the specifics of the affordable units as they're described in the zoning. And the way I understand it, there are three possible options that could be pursued to fulfill an affordable housing requirement. One would be that the units would be provided on-site. The second would be the units would be provided off-site. And the third is this payment to the Affordable Trust. And what I find in the article is that the, the descriptions and qualifications for meeting the requirements of each of those three things vary quite a bit. And specifically, the, the requirement for the type of on-site units is one sentence in Section C that says, "On-site affordable unit shall be of the same size, quality, style, and appearance as other on-site units." And then if you skip ahead to the, the payment in lieu of providing affordable units in Section J, there's a sentence that reads that that payment would be "in an amount calculated at the net cost of the production of an affordable unit on-site." And then if we circle back to this, the question of the on, the off-site units, the type of off-site units, there's no language in this zoning that specifically requires what the value would be, what the investment point would be for these off-site units. We've heard the terms described, describing what these possible units could be. They might be units in foreclosure. We've heard the word distressed properties in town. We heard bank receivership at one point. But we haven't received any information about what, what the investment level on these properties would be, or where they might be in town. There are a number of properties that are gonna come up for auction in town that have been listed in the Milton Times on Pleasant Street, Lyman Road, Canton Avenue, Center Street, Annapolis Road, and Blue Hill Avenue, just to give some examples. And I think it's important for us to know what that level of investment might be in these properties because these potential properties, in just the examples that I give you, would vary in price conceivably at auction considerably. We understand that there would be a level of investment that would be needed to be made to these properties to bring them up to standard. But again, the specifics for these properties just say that existing dwellings may be rehabilitated, shall be in decent, safe, and sanitary condition in full compliance with Building Sanitary and Health Code requirements. Roofs of existing dwellings shall have a useful life of at least 15 years. To some of us, that seems like a bit of a low bar, considering that the on-site units would be required to be as the same quality as every other on-site unit on this property. I'm prepared to make an amendment to this, but maybe first we could hear if there has been any recommendation to the town in, in providing this provision for what that level of investment would be.
Mr. Whiteside?
The off-site units are to be suitable for the neighborhood in which they're located. They're to be brought up to code. They're to be decent, safe, and sanitary. They have to be accepted into the, as units on the subsidized housing inventory. And the DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, does not accept substandard units. The fact that age-restricted units on-site may be counted as affordable units rather than non-age-restricted units off-site doesn't change the character of the units. They're affordable housing, and they're going to be, it's going to be ownership housing, and it's going to have a Milton resident, Milton Town employee preference. And it's going to provide, it's going to meet a real need. And they're going to be, if rehabilitation occurs, it's going to be a good rehabilitation, and the units are going to be in top shape.
Mr. Sloan, did you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm gonna propose an amendment to Section D of this article that after the first sentence on off-site affordable units, that we would add the language that the value of any off-site unit shall be equivalent to the net cost of the production of affordable unit on-site.
So you're on page 102?
It's...
Section D?
Section D.
B as in boy?
I'm sorry, D.
D as in David, okay.
Yeah.
102, Section, Section 9, Paragraph D. Yes, Mr. Corcoran, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, we would accept that amendment, a proposed amendment. And I can speak specifically to an ongoing negotiation right now. We are negotiating with the receivership of a property on Brook Road. It is an unsafe and unsanitary property. We're negotiating at a purchase price of about $330,000. We'll need to demolish the existing structure because it is in very poor condition and replace it with a new home with three or four bedrooms. The total cost of that's gonna be about $5,000 to $550,000. And the sale price is capped at $230,000, based on the state standard. So, it's a significant cost, but it's, it is the appropriate way to produce new housing units for affordable purposes for young families in the town.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion to amend? Ms. Getman, is this, you still working to get that up on the screen? Or is it up? It's up? Good, thank you. I just can't see. Yes, Mr. Furz, sorry, getting tired.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. The Planning Board actually accepts the amendment to its own article, but we appreciate your support as well. The Planning Board accepts this amendment as well.
So you accept it as a friendly amendment? You do? Okay. Then the Warrant Committee is voting. By the way, while they're doing that, a number of other citizens contacted me, registered voters asked permission to speak. I don't know if they're here, but it was Laura Beebe, forgive me, pardon me, thank you. I had Jack Weeks, John McPhee, and Matthew Hyatt. Did you wish to speak to the motion to amend, or to the main motion, the, the big article itself? The big article? Okay, well, all right. Yes, Mr. Fundling?
Jay Fundling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Just clarification on the wording. Was it, shall be equivalent to the net cost, or shall be at least equivalent to the net cost? I mean, equivalent is equal. That's very precise.
Fair point. What's our wording say, Mr. Furz?
Mr. Moderator, I think I wrote the word equivalent, but at least equivalent would be, would be far more acceptable, I think.
And Planning Board accepts that? Warrant Committee accepts, uh, Warrant Committee...
Warrant Committee accepts the amendment.
Accept the friendly amendment? Okay. All right. So we've now modified the main article with a friendly amendment. So we're now back to anyone else wishing to speak to the main articles? Ma'am, you've been waiting. So would you introduce yourself and your address and speak to the body? Thank you.
I'm Laura Beebe. I live at 1514 Canton Avenue, which is in Precinct 5. And I'm an officer of the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. For more than a year, neighbors and abutters have worked hard to communicate concerns about the impact of this proposed development on traffic, on the historic character of the estate, and on the views from Canton Avenue and the Blue Hill Reservation's Walcott Path. Our concerns have been heard. And with these amendments, Article 51 is acceptable to the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association would like to thank everyone involved in the engineering of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Coachella, yes?
Thank you. Anthony Chikero, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 4. And I do not have an amendment. I'm, I'm actually here tonight as an attorney for Jack Weeks, who's in Abutter. He's at 2 Carberry Lane, right at the end of Carberry Lane. And also for the Hyatts and the McPheas as well, who are 4 and 6 Carberry Lane. I was working, I've been working on this project, or this issue, since before the property was purchased. Obviously, Mr. Weeks and many of his neighbors were very concerned about what was gonna be happening there. I figured when I was retained to deal with this that I would be in an all-out brawl to prevent development on the site. Instead, we started out with a process where there was a lot of discussion about, what do you want? What do you don't want? What, and, and there was substantial negotiation. And I would say, people weren't always on the same page, and at least one of Abutter is currently still not on the same page. But I think there are substantial advantages to the town, to this development, because the property is going to be developed. I think just about everyone, other than maybe... I think just about everyone, other than maybe Mr. Dolly, would prefer that the property stay in its current state. But that's not going to happen. Many of the alternatives, a subdivision, a classic two-acre subdivision, I think would be disastrous aesthetically and otherwise from the resources that are there. I, I think at this point, there's a project that works. There's been a lot of negotiation. The vistas and the views on the site are preserved to a very substantial extent. The, the housing is largely clustered up toward the top of the site. And I think on that, it's a project that at this point, given the alternatives, Town Meeting should support. There are substantial protections for residents and neighbors, including the development agreement that Sosakman entered into. That's something other towns have done up until this project. Milton has never done it. I think that it might be a tool that would be useful for people, so that neighbors have more guarantees when they go and decide whether they're going to support a bylaw amendment or not. And as we've heard, bylaw amendments could potentially be applied otherwise, and more broadly than the pictures that we presented. But the, but the development agreement substantially limits what the developer can do, and holds the developer accountable. That circle around what the developer can do will be further closed if we pass this article in the special permit process. There's a lot more opportunity for input from neighbors and the public. So I would urge you to support this, this article. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Wells, Mr. Fay, your next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ella Wells, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9. I'm going to suggest a very small amendment to this, to this article, and it pertains to the Affordable Housing Provision, Section 9J, the payment in lieu of providing affordable units on page 91. My concern is the vagueness of the wording there, where instead of providing the offsite or onsite housing, in the event it's not reasonably possible to produce those units, et cetera, et cetera, if you go down to the fourth line, it picks up and says that they can make a payment to the affordable housing unit in an amount calculated at the net cost of the production of an affordable unit onsite, or as otherwise determined to be appropriate by the Planning Board, considering all circumstances. What I'd like to add is, at the end of that sentence, to add this phrase, but no, but in either event, in an amount no less than $230,000 for each unit. And I add that, because I think $230,000 was just mentioned as the net cost, or what it would cost to build an affordable unit. My concern is that on our street, on Highland Street, there was a precedent already set where an additional buildable acre was granted by the Planning Board. I'm sorry, did no one hear? And the figure that was given in lieu of a unit was $50,000, without any explanation. I don't want this to happen again here, where instead of building X number of affordable units, the town only gets $50,000. So that's why I'm adding, I'm suggesting this amendment. I'm hoping that it will be accepted as a favorable amendment.
Do you have that wording written down?
A friendly amendment, I do.
If you would submit it, is there a second? There is. Would you submit it, do you have, how many copies you have? One, or?
I only have one handwritten copy.
Okay, perhaps we could, we could put it up on the screen and then hand it to the town clerk. And Mr. Fers, you wish to comment?
Brian Fers, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'm not speaking to this amendment, but I did want to add a point of clarification. The $50,000 was for a lot, not for a, an actual affordable unit. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
But the lot was a buildable lot, so it wasn't explained.
I understand, I understand that, but we didn't get a unit out of it. So I just wanted to make the clarification.
Assume the text is coming up on the screen? While it's coming up, does anyone wish to speak to the motion to amend? Pardon me? Sure, thanks. Does the Planning Board have a point of view?
Just a clarification, could you give us a basis for the $230,000?
Well, that figure was just mentioned by Mr. Corcoran. I can live with 250, I can live with 200. I just think it should be a reasonable amount to replace an actual house or apartment.
The Planning Board will accept the amendment as a friendly amendment.
Sir, do you wish to speak? Yeah, by the way, if you wish to speak, just come on down to the mics and we'll recognize you. Yes, sir.
Dave Bullis, Precinct 1. I'm a little concerned that 230 is written into a bylaw. Doesn't really matter, like, what if the housing costs change? It seems like something where they, it's, you know, based on what is reasonable at the, you know, for the, for the area, or something like that. I think a fixed dollar amount, I think it's unreasonable, given the fact that housing prices vary greatly over time. So I would, I would not be in favor of a, a set limit of 230,000, or 250, or 200, or 50, or whatever.
Yes, Mr. Innes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ewan Innes, Precinct 3. At 230,000, that gets you about a 700-square-foot house equivalent. There's new house constructions about 200 to 300 dollars per square foot. If I remember Mr. Corcoran's remarks correctly, he stated that the house in foreclosure that they're negotiating on, they were looking to buy for 300. They would then do additional work to it, but it would be available for sale at 230, not that the amount of work being done was 230,000 dollars. I think, to the previous speaker's point, adding a specific dollar amount limits us. We're already in a sausage-making exercise here, as is usual with Planning Board articles, speaking from the long experience with that. We will be back here in October next year, the year after, because 230,000 isn't the right number. I'm, it is very old at this point with Planning Board zoning articles. It becomes a long, drawn-out process on the floor of this meeting every single time this comes up. I recommend no vote.
By the way, before I recognize Ms. Wells again, and does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Fers, yes?
Uh, yeah, we'll withdraw our support for the amendment. We'll leave it as is.
All right, so by the way, where we are at this point, is it means we have a motion before the body that will not have to be voted on as an amendment. So, and Ms. Wells has already spoken. Does anyone else wish to speak? Ms. Agostino? Yes. Sorry, we try to get everybody done once before anybody goes twice.
Diane DeTulio, Agostino, Precinct 9. I think the Chair of the Planning Board just corrected what I was concerned about, but to clarify, you had originally accepted it as a friendly motion, so now you've withdrawn it, so then we are back to the motion. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
That's right, that's right. Now, no one else wishes to speak to this motion? I'll go back to Ms. Wells.
I just want to clarify, it's the, it's not a specific amount. It says no less than 230,000. If anyone thinks prices are going to go down, I'd like to know about it. But if anything, it's going to go up. So I think that's a bare minimum price. It doesn't limit us to 230,000. So I don't know why someone got the specific amount notion. Thank you.
We have white smoke, Warrant Committee?
Warrant Committee does not accept the amendment.
Okay. So again, we're back to an amendment which just requires a majority vote, even though the main article requires a two-thirds, everybody's clear on that. All in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? The motion is defeated. So, we're now back to the main motion, and Mr. Fay, I think you were waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Earl Fay, Precinct 1. I greatly appreciate all the conversation with respect to affordable housing. I greatly appreciate the acceptance of Mr. Sloan's comments. And I do have a question. I'm pretty sure I heard, Mr. Whiteside, you suggest that changing the 50% of market units have been sold to a 25% number under the sale and resale section, that if I, I believe I heard you say would be quite reasonable. I don't know if you were saying that as an individual or part of the board, but if it would be something the Planning Board would entertain and the developer would entertain, I would like to see that 50% reduced to 25%, and that's in the subsection E under the Affordable Units section.
Are you hypothesizing, or making a motion?
Well, I'm gonna, yes, I'm gonna hypothesize that the, Mr. Whiteside perhaps could comment on his comment made a few minutes earlier, to see if that would be acceptable.
So perhaps let's get...
Save some debate.
All right, let's perhaps be specific. It looks like you're making a friendly amendment, requesting, suggesting a friendly amendment in page 103, Section E. Do I have that correct?
You are correct. I'm s...
Yes, Section 9, Paragraph E.
Looking to offer this as a friendly amendment, if on page 103 of the warrant, subsection E, the last sentence, the 50% number be struck to 25%. Thank you.
Request to the Planning Board of a friendly amendment. Since he made it a friendly, it doesn't require a second. If they reject it, it would. Mr. Whiteside, is that you?
This is, we, we will accept it as a friendly amendment, but we hope there are not too many more.
Yes. Mr. Fers, yes?
I feel compelled to rise to address the amendments that are coming to the floor of Town Meeting tonight. We just had someone come up that has a great deal of experience with the Planning Board due to his spouse serving for many years. We have a very open process for zoning in this town. We have many, many public meetings, we have many, many public hearings. It's very troubling to be getting these type of comments on the floor of Town Meeting, and then hear that the planning process is sausage-making on the floor of Town Meeting. We have a very open process. Some of the amendments have been made by people that were at every single public hearing. So I just want to make very clear that we'll, we'll continue to entertain the motion, because it's our job. But we worked very hard on this. We gave an enormous amount of time to the public to comment, and we're very confident in this article as it's submitted. Thank you.
Mr. Carr, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Henry Carr, Precinct 10. Actually, I just want to ask two things of the presentation that Ned gave. One was, well, I assume this is an empty nester, you said 55, but there's going to be zero students? I mean, does that mean if you're 55 and you have children, you can't have people in the schools? And also then, just addressing the traffic situation, there's going to be another 300, approximately 380, or 300-something amounts of trip on, I don't know if anybody's been on Canton Ave at that time of the day, the traffic backs up trying to get to Blue Hills. And, I mean, I wish you could wave a wand and make it go away, but that just seems like it's going to add a, a lot of traffic to that section of town. And maybe you could comment on those two items?
Mr. Whiteside?
It is 55 or older housing, which is a federally defined type of housing, and actually, some 55 or older housing has people in it that are not 55. But it's a matter of federal law. And the second question was the traffic. The traffic is going to be studied, and if there are adverse impacts that can't be remedied, take a look at... Section 14. Section 15, 15A, Traffic Impact Study.
Page 111, folks, for traffic.
Substantial impacts will not be, adverse impacts will not be permissible.
Yes, Mr. Fers?
And just to further clarify on the traffic point, again, this is a zoning article, so this is meant to be general, in some ways, in the sense of traffic and sprinkler systems and whatnot, such that the Planning Board can have some discretion about what sort of mitigation would be put in place if an application came before us under this zoning. So as Mr. Whiteside points out, we would have a traffic study that would be peer-reviewed by a town traffic engineer, and then conditions would be put on the project in order to mitigate any impact. That is a requirement of the zoning, but the specific conditions and the specific mitigations would be determined during the special permit process.
Mr. Bowpre?
The War, yes, Warrant Committee accepts the friendly amendment.
Okay. Yes, question? I'm, (laugh) I, uh, ready to go. So, we're now voting on the recommendation of the Warrant Committee as amended. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee as amended, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? I declare a two-thirds vote. So, ladies and gentlemen, is there a second? All in favor of motion to dismiss, please say aye. Opposed, no? See you tomorrow night, 7:30. Thank you.